The council meeting of October 12th, 2015 to order, and we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call shows all council and the heads are here. We do have city manager on sick leave. Get approval of the amendments, the minutes for September 28th.
Seven page eight, Holly Gurdem, and not an "and" at the end.
You have something Glenn?
Not anymore.
Okay.
I'll move the minutes.
For discussion? Kaylon Pierce, say aye.
Aye.
Approve of the bills.
Got one for the invoice.
Okay.
Distribution report, the first page of the one of seven. The Dorothy Street parking lot, reconstruction, HRC for a thousand sixty bucks. I thought, I don't remember us deciding that we needed any engineering on doing a repair on that. I thought you were, you and your guys were going to check the rain and if something happened, it'd be mauled or somebody was going to do a fill in that hole.
Agree.
You don't know any person.
No, I sir, we don't know. Go check on it and get back.
If you would, thank you.
I'll move the bills then if there's nobody else.
Okay, and now further discussion? Kaylon Pierce, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Prove the agenda. I have one I would like to add, and that would be an appointment for the Parks and Recs Department for number four.
We need a super majority for the.
Yeah, I agree. Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion to move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Okay. Okay, public comment. At this time, anybody wishes to speak on any item that's not listed on our agenda?
So should I speak now about the topic of Lindsay's Smoker and the Witch's Hat?
It's not on our agenda.
Or should I wait till the food truck area of the agenda?
Seem like this would be fine. I mean, the food truck thing is more comprehensive.
I don't have a problem.
Okay. So I know there's been a lot of talk on social media, and I know people probably like to hear what people are saying about them in an election year.
I only made five copies, so if you want to take one, pass it down. I took people's names out, but that's every, all the.
Excuse me, can I get your name?
Joyce Floesy.
Thank you.
And your address?
Three zero two Lion Boulevard. I also own one five eight Lion Boulevard. So I took people's names out, but those are just comments that people posted on the article, just generally in favor of Chad or not in favor of action that the city's taken. So I do actually own a home in the city and I do pay taxes. So these were my comments. This is a great opportunity for each member of city council and the mayor to change their actions, ambivalence, and viewpoints, and get out and actually support two local brick and mortar businesses who are already here in the community and have found a way to survive in spite of city government. Instead of caving to the good old boys' club that South Lion is famous for, or personal prejudices of a few, you each have the opportunity to allow Chad to operate again as he has been for months, beyond the thirty day permit just granted to him to get you through the election. It's wonderful that the city is interested in creating a position to act as a liaison to develop downtown. However, if city council, mayor, city manager, and city attorney persist in their actions, how worthwhile is it to even create such a position? Seems like we just need you all to stop working against what we already have before you try developing anything further. And by the way, is this the same city attorney that I read the article about that wanted the hundred percent pay raise this year? Hopefully for him, he's at least worked through his retainer and is getting paid a nice hourly rate drafting that ordinance. At least someone will benefit. This is an opportunity for you all individually or as a group to undo past wrongs or indifferences and take a visible action to support two local businesses, not just lip service, but real specific action that is permanent. You can claim to be a small town, small business champion for something specific people will remember when they go to vote. You are all getting your city council check, city manager's salary, or mayor's salary regardless of the outcome, but individuals who use this daily income have lost income to support their families and keep the doors open. Chad has thrown away thousands in spoilage while you've had them shut down. Again, something specific you can hang your hat on that people will remember if you actually get, get them going again. It's an election year. If for no other reason than it's an election year, you should all be individually clamoring over each other to get Chad back in service. First, people see and like his business. It's visible. You will be visible in that social media slash newspaper article if you're out there shaking his hand and getting credit for getting him going again. Positive and specific PR that money can't buy. These are two businesses that people know and like and patronize. They also know it's not up and running. Whoever wants to help get him up and running, in addition to Joe, is going to get noticed and get positive talk in the community. How many people actually know of something positive that city council, positive and specific that city council has done? You have the opportunity to create an opportunity here. Whoever gets him going is going to get noticed. Whoever just gives him the thirty day permit to shut people up will also get noticed. This may be a case of some missteps in the government's efforts to whet its beak on individual success, but that's okay. That's how it works. It may be a few people's personal prejudices, and that's the way it is as well in a small town. However, the precedent has also been set by allowing him to successfully operate for months. This country was built on sole proprietorship, and this would be a great opportunity for you all to support one. You can allow the city manager to stop income and progress while the city attorney drafts more bureaucracy, or you can allow him to get going again permanently, and that's what people will notice and remember. Not another ordinance you created and a line item in the budget for the city attorney's bill, but I'm sure people would be fascinated to hear what we're getting billed for that. Behind whatever excuse, hide behind whatever excuses you want to, but I'm sure you've all heard the phrase, "The man is holding you back." Well, unless you're giving him the nod tonight to resume his business permanently, not just for thirty days to shut people up, congratulations. How's it feel to be the man?
Anybody else?
Carl Richards, three ninety Lennox. Imagine you're expecting this. I'll be fast as I can. I've been up to the railroad. Okay. I was up there today. I took pictures. Waste management's brought in a new dumpster. I talked to the driver, but he don't really know anything. He's just doing his job like everybody else. Okay. I wanted to get to the top supervisor, which I have done in the past, and talk to him, but I missed him, and I had to keep going. I couldn't hang around. What they're doing up there, I'm absolutely amazed. It's tremendous. It's beyond our wildest dreams if that keeps that track quiet. Okay. Now, February eleventh, two thousand thirteen, we're all present. All of us were here. I provided you with a memo, I guess it was, stating six points of what I thought was necessary at that railroad crossing. Okay, on part of it, I have to admit, I was wrong. When I'm wrong, I'll say I was wrong. Okay. Evidently, the water problem is resolved under the water main problem, and they are not going to address what I thought was going to be addressed, widening the curbs and redoing the underground storm sewer at that location. I believe, firmly believe, that that will be done in the next fifteen years, but a widening of ten mile at that point, okay? I believe they're going to put another lane in, but maybe it isn't going to happen. It's out of our control. It's all MDOT or Oakland County. We have nothing to do other than we make a suggestion. That's about all we can do. Okay. When I got done with that agenda, I went over and looked at the fountain at Baker's Park. Our boys have put some new dye in that water, or other chemicals, maybe just the chemicals and it makes a color, but it's, the water's absolutely beautiful. It's a new tinge of blue and green that I've never seen, and it dazzles in the sunlight. Okay. Moving on, just to let you know, I finished up the painting project at the Witch's Hat Historical Village. I've been gradually painting all of the light poles, touching them up wire brush, steel wool, blasting them with a rag, and hitting them with paint. This has been authorized by Larry, and they paid for the paint, and I thought I did a pretty good job finally. The last, the last seven today, the first four were really rough. The last three were just touch up lightly. But anyway, the light poles are all painted in McCatty Park at the Witch's Hat, and they look great, and I hope everybody enjoys it. Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak? And public speaker?
Ryan Lear, seven sixteen Grand Court. I just came out to, wanted to come up and say, I support Chad and the smoker. He's been a dear friend of mine for a long time, so I would like to see him be able to use a smoker in the long term, but I also would like to thank all the people that work tirelessly in this city, seven days a week, two chiefs, and Bob, and, and I think that that needs to be recognized as well, that not everybody is, you know, a problem. And I just think that that needs to be recognized. There's a lot of people that do a great job in this city. I've been proud to live here for fifteen years, and I hope I have many more. Thank you.
My name is Mike Wermly. I live at three twenty-three Princeton Drive. I've only lived in South Lion for four years, but I watch the city council meeting every week. And the more I watch this, especially in an election year, it's became where it's kind of comical, actually. People make comments about the council and the money. I mean, I'm a businessman, have been for many years. I wouldn't sit up there for what you guys make if everybody thinks it's for the money. It certainly can't be for the money. But what I would like to see is, in an election year, that people run on their merits, not what other people are not doing, but what they can do. And I, all you people are very smart people. I, you know, you're on the city council, I mean, you're on the city website, I mean, you can check your agenda, or not your agenda, but what you do for a living. And I don't think you're up here to argue every week. I think you, I think sometimes it becomes too personal, and I would see, like to see less of that and more of what, you know, what you're going to do for the people, not what this guy did, or that guy did, or what he didn't do, because I don't think that's what the people want to hear. I don't know anything about what's going on with the cooker or whatever, but I'm sure that'll be worked out. But I would just like to see people to run on their merits and not what this guy did and this guy didn't do. Thank you for your time.
John Gallus, one three four North Warren. First off, I commend all you guys. I mean, I've been up there, so I know what this is about. I know how it is. I know how hard it is sometimes, and you can't please everybody all the time, and there's a lot of issues that come up that are very controversial. My, I want to say something. Carl, I appreciate your comments. So, I've been here twenty-five years, and not going to be long on this. I've been here twenty-five years and been part of the council, been part of the planning commission, know you guys pretty well, been part of the planning in the city for a long time, and, and yeah, we love this town. I love this town, just like you guys do. And we went through a big growth spurt fifteen so years ago. We're going through a major spurt again. It's not so much in the city, but it's around us, and it's causing a lot of undue pressure in our, in our downtowns and our roads and everything, and it's going to cause a lot more discussion that's going to be needed on our end to try to rectify some of these problems. My bigger issue is coming from the business side. I've done real estate for many, many years. My family's been in real estate for many, many years. I've been a licensed realtor out here for twelve, thirteen years. My wife does real estate. And we've heard the comments firsthand from people that I've tried to bring here to open businesses, not so much to move here, because everybody wants to live here. You know, we've got great schools and all that. Nobody, nobody's questioning that, but they're, they're saying things as if, and I've seen it firsthand and experienced it firsthand, I, there's not a very comfy feeling relationship between government and the businesses. And there's a support, but we're competing against all these towns around us, and we're silly if we think that we can just ignore the fact that we can't attract some of these people here, when we have everything here already, and, and we missed the first spurt a little bit, and now we're getting hammered. And to have as many vacant buildings as we have downtown and buildings up for sale, and now we have some old great businesses that are getting ready to retire and move out of town, the numbers don't add up. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I've heard the comments firsthand from people telling me why they don't want to be here, and I'm not going to bring those up tonight. And, but it's on the business side. And I know two businesses specifically that, I wouldn't say you guys didn't support them, but they sure didn't get information fed to them freely enough to make them feel as though they should be here. And money doesn't stop in business. You have, you have a fund that has to pay however it is you're going to open your business and do what needs to be done. Bills have to be paid on their end. They take a lot of time out of their life and, and their bank accounts and everything and investments to make these things work, and they can't stop and wait for things to happen. And I know government is slow for a reason, and it needs to be, but when it, when it slows to a point where it keeps people from wanting to be here, we have a little bit of a problem. And these two businesses specifically, I won't mention their names, they're both extremely successful today outside of South Lion, and they're both friends of mine, and I'm happy for them. It's great, but I'm unhappy because they're not here, you know? And so what I'm saying is, I would like to see everybody take a look at zoning, take a look at our regulations, take a look at what's on the books now, and start to realize that maybe there's some things we need to do to adjust them a little bit in order to accommodate some of these new businesses that are wanting to move to this town. You know, like the downtown specifically, we all have these historic homes. Most of the rules and regulations in the book, we can't do anything, you know, because setbacks are not right and building places aren't right. Everything, everything's kind of messed up. But you look at Northville, you look at Milford, you look at Brighton, you look at Howell, you look at all these other communities, and New Hudson now is trying to build a downtown, you know, trying to make it work. Whether it works or not, who knows, you know? But they're all planning ahead, and we seem to be got our feet stuck in neutral, you know? And business isn't going to wait for us to figure it out. So with all this growth and all this is going on right now, I really would like to see us come together as a board and as a group and, and start to look at these issues before they hit us in the head like a two by four, which they already are, and make it more comfortable for these people that want to come to this town. We're supposed to be ambassadors for people. I know somebody the other day that came asking for some information, told they were going to get a phone call back, still haven't received it. Very simple question, hasn't gotten, hasn't even gotten the response back yet. So it's a little thing, but it's a big thing when it comes to business, because people are investing their money into the city, they're investing their money into their businesses, and it's their families. So they can't wait for people to decide what they want to do, or let political stuff get in the way, or all that. And you guys have all been here, some younger, some older. Business is business, man, you know? And government is supposed to be transparent, it's supposed to be helpful, it's supposed to be available, and do the things that are necessary to protect the city, but do things that are going to also help the people of the city and the local business owners make their businesses profitable, because if you do, it'll bring more people to this town. And that's nothing but good for South Lion. So that's all I have to say.
Ryan Cotton, Witch's Hat Brewing Company. I'm going to be real quick. I just, I appreciate and I'm very happy for Chad that, you know, he was issued a thirty day temporary license to be able to run, run his smoker and do his business, and I think that's great. And Chief Collins, you know, I appreciate, I've seen him outside the brewery for, you know, the last several working days and really working on that to make that happen. And it is very appreciated, and I'm pretty sure Chad, you know, greatly appreciates it as well. But what, and I'm not even trying to get into a whole whatever else it's getting into, but I'm concerned by just the way that it all went down. See, this is a decision made by our city manager, who for health reasons is not here, and I get that, I'm not trying to pick on someone for, you know, being on sick leave and having health issues, but it was a decision made by the city manager, firmly with support of the attorney, and a week later, after a bunch of attentions drawn to it, it's rectified. And that concerns me as a business owner in this town, that, you know, to be so, to put such a firm stop to something for legal reasons that, hey, we can't do this, and all of a sudden to just fix it when, you know, this person's gone, not even here, and it just seems like that position was just trumped. And to me, that it's, it just seems disorderly, and is concerning. And maybe it's not, you know, I don't know what you guys do and what the process has been, you know, but I just want to draw attention to that aspect of it and what I see on my end and just the concern level there. So, thank you.
Diane Rose, two oh two North Lafayette, South Lion, Diane Stillhouse. I hadn't planned on speaking, but listening to all this, I've been down here almost twenty-six years. I know how hard it is to stay in business, and I know when these people open a business, it's not just a business, your heart is in it, you become part of the community, people depend on you, they come into your store, they're happy that you're here, and I just hope you find a way, because when you see something like the Witch's Hat, working with another business, like the pizza place, to try to make their business a little bit better and flourish, it's such a smart idea, and I don't think it's smart on the part of us to try to make it hard for them. I would like to see the city council try to do everything they can to make it better and easier to keep all the businesses we have, because after all, we are supposed to be the fastest growing community, and one of the reasons we are is because there's people like us for them to see downtown, and it attracts them, and they think, what a cute little town. But if we can't all stay here, we won't be a cute little town anymore. So I please, I hope you help the, the people stay here in business. Thank you very much.
Ryan Mackey, one two 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 two, Wild Oak Circle. I'm here to support Chad. Chad, not only do I, am I a customer of Chad's, but I do business with Chad, as I do with restaurants all over South Lion, Whitmore, Ann Arbor, Chelsea. Something that I see that's very concerning, that I would really like you to focus on and take a hard look at, especially in the food industry, when you have restaurants that are not only in, in business partnership with the government body, but the rest of the community, and they're all working together, it's much more beneficial for all of them. When you have groups of restaurants that, they don't compete against each other, they bring people in, they bring people in together. And what I've witnessed since Pumpkin Fest is a lot of just aggression, and it, it's being displayed toward a business owner. It's a brick and mortar place. I'm encouraging you to take a look at how the other cities operate and how they got to that part. Milford, Northville, downtown Plymouth, Chelsea, Ann Arbor. You have, you have restaurants, you can, you can choose from fifty different places all within walking distance. They have a great relationship with the city, they have a great relationship with the DDA, and they actively are forming the downtown to make it more business friendly. We still have trucks driving downtown. We could put a parking lane in, work with the DDA, make it so that people can congregate and walk safely. You don't need an ordinance to get these trucks out of town, but that still hurts these businesses. But the better the restaurants do, the better all the businesses do around it. I really would like to see the city take a very active and aggressive approach to be more friendly toward these restaurants. It would be greatly appreciated.
Alrighty, thank you folks. Old business, we have none. New business, downtown trick or treat for this year is, I believe, the Thursday, is that right? Nineteenth. Anne Holly, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Holly Gurdem, here on behalf of the DDA requesting the road closure for downtown trick or treat on Thursday, October twenty-ninth. Road closure would be six to nine with the event six thirty to eight thirty.
Make the motion that we approve the requested road closures for the downtown trick or treat.
I'll second. Okay, further discussion? We did this last year first time, right?
Yes, and it helped tremendously, because the roads were packed.
Yeah, I just, I just worry, the one thing I have to worry about is because that trick or treating extends beyond those block offs, blockage, or the gates, and I just hope people don't have a brain you-know-what and just walk out into the street on the other side.
Well, I know that Chief Collins has his guys down there. We did talk about, and I apologize because I haven't been able to get this answer with Lynn out of town, excuse me, out. We talked about extending an invitation to businesses that wanted to be involved and allowing them to set up in the Sweetwater parking lot. We've even talked to Norm about using his corner and people being able to set up tents, and I think the Chamber even has some of their businesses coming in and setting up in front of their business. I believe there was an email that was supposed to go out from Lynn to the businesses that are actually in the DDA that were not, that are not within the road closure, inviting them to be downtown, and then we were going to give that a cutoff and decide how many spaces we had left of people we could accommodate in that area, open it up to other businesses that wanted to be down there. But again, I apologize, I don't have the answer on whether that email went out, and I don't have access to all the business emails. So I apologize because I can't. I would have done it, but.
Yeah, again, it's just, I understand the merit of what you're trying to do, and it is, especially the four corners, where just a hundred people on each corner are waiting to try and cross and that kind of thing, and it's a huge success, we know that. Again, we don't know if they were notified or not, but in places like Brown's or Mo's Garage there, I mean, he likes to set up his big display and, and everything that makes it logistically probably not very good for them, and the bakery itself, he always goes through about sixteen hundred cookies or whatever it is, and it's just, there's a lot of viable businesses on the other side of the fence.
Right, and like I said.
And I guess, I wish there was a way we could detour two blocks.
Right.
You know, that's the, that's the issue.
I don't think that's, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to speak to that because I'm not in charge of.
There's not a viable detour south of Liberty Street.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I just, I don't think there is. It's kind of hard to run traffic both ways around past Phil Wafer's house and John's house. That would be very, very tough on them. I guess, you know, we're discussing it and we're up to make an approval of it, and I just hope that nothing ever happens because of it, because of an accident of some kind. But, so, all right. Anybody else want to comment on that, or go ahead and vote? Hey, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first reading of the amendment to chapter thirty-eight, City of South Lion Coto ordinances.
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm looking back and forth. Go ahead.
This one is a housekeeping request on behalf of fifty-two-one District Court. They have been charging money on behalf of the city for quite some time now under the emergency cost recovery ordinance. They had been collecting a hundred and fifty dollars total on OWI arrest, a hundred and twenty-five going to the city, twenty-five going to the court. Under the new arrangement, the court will be charging two hundred total with a hundred and seventy-five going to the city and twenty-five going to the court. The reason for the added language in the ordinance is the State Court Administrator's Office, upon auditing fifty-two-one District Court, wanted to see that the municipalities... Office, upon auditing 521 District Court, wanted to see that the municipalities that the court charged money on behalf of had a corresponding ordinance to allow the court to take their $25 out of the total amount. So purely housekeeping, and we request approval on behalf of the 521 District Court.
Mr. Motion, we approve the request.
I support that.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor on this first reading of the amendment to Chapter 38, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Number three, discussion regards food trucks, mobile and stationary food vendors, concessionaires.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Yep.
So this, this agenda note tries to lay out a variety of questions, try and develop some discussion and gather information about the various stakeholder positions and try and develop a framework and get some idea of what the various concerns are and how we might go about crafting an ordinance that would allow for the food truck and vendor concept on private and public property. I do think there's a distinction between the private-public property issue. And that's really, I don't know how much time each of you spent with this list, we can try and walk through this, but basically we're looking for what is the public interest and what are they interested in? What do the existing restaurants, what are their interests and desires, and what would they like to see? What are the vendors that want to engage in this activity? And the public and the city, what are you trying to do from a regulatory side? What's going to make sense as far as your permitting? How involved is it going to be? What kind of process will you have internally as a staff? And how much enforcement? You know, some of that depends, will determine how much enforcement activity you engage in, inspections and so forth. So based on some of the public comments tonight, the idea here is to try and gather some of this information, or at least figure out what council would like to do as far as an approach to this ordinance.
I got a comment.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I went through bullet point by bullet point and provided as many answers. Some of them had to be warrants, discussion between the council, but there's many that are pretty much judgment calls, and there's, there's a few of them that are exactly the reason why some of this, the business with Chad was a little bit up in the wind, simply because there's a lot of things that need a lot of research to be able to make any reasonable decisions on some of this stuff. Getting, trying to assume that we have insight into what the restaurateurs in the city feel about this one way or the other. I would prefer that we have a more organized and legitimate question, maybe come up with a questionnaire where everything is kind of organized, we have legitimate information instead of anecdotal information, be able to make some of those decisions. But the judgment stuff, I think it's kind of, we can just sort of wing it and come up with what we see as the benefits and how to operate this whole thing. So, sort of, the Chad thing was sort of an outlier in this, and it got bound up in the complexity that's inherent to the variety of applications that this will have in the future. It may not end up having it in our future because we have such a limited exposure of these arenas for these things that they place in. Some of the examples that we had had in our packet had been the Chicagos and Grand Rapids and things that have a myriad of different kind of environments that you could host this type of activity with a whole lot of different flavors of the way that it was produced. Ours is, I don't, I don't see us having nearly that same level of exposure, but we still have ripe opportunities to be able to capitalize on. So, but the Chad thing, what, his thing wasn't as much solely a product of the complexity of this as it was the coupling with the land use that was taking place at Witch's Hat. So that, those two components together, that kind of caused a little bit more hesitance, I think, than maybe turned out to be necessary. So, but I'd like us to end up kind of, if, I don't know if anybody else had written anything down, but if anybody else is prepared to kind of tick, or go through the ticks and have discussion, I think that would be valuable.
Well, I know in Ann Arbor, they have a designated area. It's right down the street from my office, so I know they have a designated area. So the question is, do we, I mean, that's one of the questions that needs to be addressed. Do we want a designated area? I know in, I think it was East Lansing, when we, the city did reach out to these other communities and were trying to find out how they did it. East Lansing, they had a lot of pushback from their brick and mortar restaurants. So there was concerns with that, so what they did is they made the licensing fee higher to offset the restaurant owners that actually owned buildings. So I mean, is that a question that we're going to have here? And that's something we need to address. Believe it or not, in the last two weeks, we have done a lot of work and research on this situation. It's, it's always sounds like it's simple, and it should be a simple, you know, concept, why can't we do it tomorrow? The problem is, when you start looking into this and you start comparing all the other issues and other problems that people had with other cities trying to address this concern, it got really complicated. And in the last two weeks, we were able to figure out enough so that Chad could have a temporary license while we tried to figure this out. My biggest concern is uniformity. I want to make sure we come up with something that's uniform, that people understand, so there is no questions down the road, there's no favoritism to one business over the, another. I want to make sure we have an ordinance that gets it right, and that there will be no questions when people come in to apply for one of these licenses. We all love food trucks, I mean, food trucks, that is a national craze right now. It'd be great to bring in food trucks for events, it would be great to bring in local food trucks, but, you know, my concern is, I want to get it right. And I don't want to feel, and I apologize, Chad, I don't want to feel rushed, but we, this is on our, it's like top on the list right now because we want to get this addressed, and we want to do it right. So I just want to make sure we do it right.
Yes, Aaron.
I guess I have a little problem with not feeling rushed when I asked for this to be investigated on the June 8th meeting. So I guess I have a problem with that comment that we've done a lot in the last two weeks. We should have been doing a lot in the last three to four months, because I asked for this to be addressed on the June 8th meeting. So I had three concerns at the June 8th meeting, and one was health, which I think we all agree, the Health Department has regulations and they need to follow along in the food trucks. And I had safety, which the food trucks a lot of times are powered by propane, propane has its safety issues. And then I had just being compatible with brick and mortar buildings. At Pumpkin Fest, I saw a food truck, I ate at the food truck, that was parked very close to Brown's Root Beer. I mean, he was happy with it, it wasn't selling anything that Brown's was selling to, and he actually went out there and helped the guy get set up because he was kind of new to the food truck industry. And I thought that was great, and I ate at Brown's that weekend, and I also ate at that food truck this weekend, until my diet's not good. And so anyhow, I mean, I had three items that I was concerned about, and my list here, which I looked at as well, that came to me after four months-ish, has 30 items on it that I need to think about. I'm thinking about three. So, you know, but I think, I mean, we saw this happening, I mean, everybody knows that food trucks are popular, and it was addressed, and it wasn't handled, and that's where my disappointment lies. Yes, we need to do this, yes, it's going to need to take time to go over some of these things, but we should have done that stuff a long time ago and not waited. And so I'm still for food trucks. I mean, I was the one that brought it up, and I want to see them in here, I want to see them compatible, I want to see more than just Chad. And I, you know, everybody, we're tearing down a building in our town soon, it's going to be a whole empty lot. You know, maybe that's where our food trucks go, like you talk about designated area. I was just in Grand Rapids a couple of weekends ago, there is a lot of food trucks out there. It's huge out there, and there's a lot of bars, and there's a lot of restaurants, there's a way to work it out. And we just have to figure that out, and unfortunately, it might take time, but like I said, unfortunately, it was asked in the beginning of June.
Ted? Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I, as well, I feel that if we're going to have some sort of an ordinance, it needs to be prudent and make sense for the benefit of the community. What I am concerned about is an interim, what are we doing to handle? For example, there was a food truck outside the farmer's market, so are they not going to be allowed? What happens after Chad's 30 days? I mean, I would assume, and I would hope that he gets some sort of an extension. What about the people who sell pizzas at the high school? People selling popcorn on the corner? I mean, it just, there's a lot of scenarios that I feel, necessarily, I don't, we're kind of lumped in to this discussion with Chad, and I really just want to make sure that if other people are coming forward that want to practice and support their local businesses or their local charities, that the city is being just as friendly, is being just as friendly with everybody and actually taking a pro-business, pro-charity approach and making it easy on them to get this temporary permit so we don't have to go through this scenario again. But if we're going to review food trucks, yeah, I'm all in favor of making sure we're doing it right, making sure we have a sound ordinance, but as I said, in the meantime, it's not inconvenient to anybody else who really is trying to better themselves. Thank you.
Well, I think, do you guys, I mean, do you want to go through the bullet points now so we can give...
No, because I think this should go to the Planning Commission and let them present us what they think is best for this city like this. This is why we have a Planning Commission. It's not for our job to go through each one of these and say yes or no, or maybe, or whatever.
I don't agree with that. I think that we have absolute interest in, in at least answering these questions that can be provided in the planning, and they can kind of refine the grander scheme of how the ordinance would be put together.
Even if we answer them and turn them into the Planning Commission, yeah, yeah. I mean, these, like I said, there's 30...
We're not going to be the ones that draw the language up.
No, there's 30 questions here. And I think we have to answer the 30 questions, but it's not like we don't have a say in it.
That comes at the end.
Well...
No, we're the policy guys, we should end up giving them forewarning of what...
Well, I think they got forewarning, and as I said, I think the Planning Commission should have this to deal with and present it to us, and then we can approve or disapprove.
But see, the problem is, when you, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the problem is this, it's better to give direction so they know which way we're going to go with it before they come up with something and then bring it back up here, and then we, then we give them direction saying we don't want this.
And somebody took the time to put 30 questions together, I have three. So, I mean, somebody took the time to put these 30 questions together, I think this is, this is the right start, answer the questions.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these we won't be able to answer because it goes, deals with the, you know, what the public wants, what, you know...
But we can put your opinion, you can give your opinion.
Well, like, for instance, I mean, do we want, number one, is it limited to food? Or does it also include merchandise?
I'd like to see parallel tracks, have them separate, this is my personal opinion. I'd like to have them separate, but on parallel tracks, where you can do merchandising downtown, but it is something that has some documents to regulate it, as opposed to letting them put up tents and free-for-all out there. So I think there'll be a lot of parallels with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Harvey?
Thank you. Yeah, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna go through these, we should confine ourselves to the area of food trucks or vending outside of a brick and mortar restaurant.
Well, it is one of the questions that you're...
That's what the issue is before us, so to talk about, like, the first question, t-shirts and wristbands, no, we're going to talk about food, food vendors or food trucks. It shouldn't take us that long time to burn through these and get them, give some guidance to the Planning Commission, who's going to have to write the ordinance, and for that matter, the attorney and planner, who will probably also weigh in on these issues.
Tim?
I was just going to make a comment about the merchandise. You're seeing on, I know, for example, in East Lansing, they do these small pop-up stores, which are essentially mobile carts for selling merchandise, and if you've been to a mall, you get these in the middle of the mall area. And I don't know if that's, if there's a demand for that in South Lyon, but that was the reason for that type of question.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, come the end of, you know, Stanley Cup and that, you get tents and stuff popping up all over the place, and it'd be kind of nice to have some kind of control over what's, how that's managed.
Okay, Beth?
Well, there was an interesting concept in here that one of the cities tried was indoor market all year long, the food vendors all in that, might be a thought.
I didn't hear what you said, on the lawn?
No, an indoor market, instead of just, you know, all-year-around market.
Oh, okay.
Building with all the food trucks.
I didn't hear you, I apologize.
Yeah, that's just it, I mean, there's a lot of very interesting applications of what can take place. Some of them may not be well-suited for us, but there's a whole lot of opportunities that can be very cool and exciting.
Yeah, I mean, like, for instance, do we limit it to like, public, private parking lots, I mean, which way? I don't have a problem with both, right?
I think there's ways to capitalize on both of them.
Right.
To me, the one that we need to be, or I don't think that we need to have as much say in the private aspect of it myself. I think if a business owner wants to have that kind of activity take place in his, his property, and he fulfills whatever the safety measures and, you know, fire and stuff like that, why would we care? You know? I guess the only time that that might end up being a complication is if that, the proximity of that private location is too close to a restaurant, and then we'd have to weigh how we address that. You know, is it, is it solved by having a fee that is high enough so that you're sort of trying to compensate the brick and mortar tax that is being paid throughout the course of the year? I, I mean, there's a number of different ways, already prevent it from being too close to those types of opportunities, I mean, but, but there's still, like I say, there's all kinds of cool things that can happen, and private, I think, is a lot less of a problem for us to manage.
Right, and then zoning requirements for the locations, I mean, that's something that we have to deal with.
Well, land use and that, yeah, that'll be a real thing, absolutely, right. But the public stuff now, I, see, I guess I just don't know, should we just tick down through this thing, or just have this free-for-all?
Well, it's like, I mean, do we give, I mean, there's this, another situation, like, how much, how long can they have it? I mean, are we talking, we restricting it to weekends? Are we talking 30 days? Are we doing it renewable license? I mean, that's...
Again, the private-public thing, I mean, because, you know, with Witch's Hat and Chad's scenario, if those guys are comfortable with it going on perpetually, why would we want to impose ourselves into that? That's a business decision, and, you know, if they're comfortable, why would we care?
Yeah, we really should stay...
So, so we have some structure, I think, instead of just ticking down these things, and it's just all hearsay, you know, like what we said on...
Oh, it's not all, I mean...
It's not all, I know, no, but I'm saying, just instead of ticking it down, I think it would help if it, if it is going to go to planning, I think it would help them if they didn't just hear us talking about, you know, that they actually had it in writing. I mean, I think our ideas would still be good to put in writing to the Planning Commission if that's where it's going to go, instead of just ticking down these and like, oh, was it, did Harvey say something, or did Glenn say something? You know, Planning Commission can have a packet, I know, but they can, they can have a packet, and they can, you know, if that's, I didn't know that that's where our direction was, that it was going to go to planning, I mean, but if it's going to planning, it needs to go in an organized way so that planning doesn't sit there and have a 10-month discussion about it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of going through this, I mean, there's a lot of people here today that want some answers, I mean, I think we owe it to them to at least give us some input.
Well, there's not going to be any answers.
Well, this is a discussion thing tonight, you're not making, you can't make decisions on it.
Okay.
This is the first step.
Absolutely, but I mean, going through the questions, at least getting some input.
Can I just make a suggestion, real quick? I just wanted to mention the First Merritt parking lot by the bank. The bank closes at 5 o'clock, and I just want, why, I just thought of it, that's why I wanted to come up here real quick, is I think it was Mike that mentioned alternate parking. The bank closes at 5 o'clock, you got a giant parking lot, you could do one half of the parking lot with food trucks, the other half can serve, you know, do merchandise. It's a great parking spot, just, just an idea.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm actually, I'm, I'm, I agree with you, Aaron, I think we should sit down...
Are you surprised?
No, I, yeah, no, let the record reflect, no, but...
I am.
I, I think in order to get this going, and rather than not sit there and deal with this for the next 10 months, maybe if we can jot down some ideas individually and then just submit it.
When's their next meeting?
I don't know.
If I can make some suggestions.
I'd like to just impose on the interactivity of our discussion in this, I think, is really valuable... valuable enough to warrant having this conversation, as opposed to us individually putting stuff down and not being incited by somebody else's comment. I mean, that-
No, I still think we need to discuss today, but we don't have to discuss, like, we don't have to fill in the sheet today as the part of the discussion, but, I mean, a lot of us have already brought up some things on this list. We can discuss, we're not saying not to discuss today.
I know, so, okay, so let's kinda go through and discuss it.
But if you just go bullet by bullet and never turn anything into the planning commission, it's not gonna be helpful.
Right. This is on videotape, and this is pretty good at kinda chronicling what's going on, so, or what's been said. So I think, I think this can be really valuable to end up getting the ball rolling, just by talking it through. Some of them will work, some of them won't. And the ones that won't will have to come back and, you know, flush them out individually, and then come back and get some kinda consensus.
I mean, some of the, some of the issues these other cities dealt with was, I mean, were they making exceptions to their zoning requirements, or for like signage, all those things, lighting, stuff like that?
Right.
I mean, is that something that we would consider, or is that something that we should-
No, that's something that I think probably planning might end up having a little bit more insight into, whether, what the value driven by that discussion would be.
But the food trucks also, I mean, that's their personality, when they come with their signs and their colors and their lights, and that's what makes the food trucks, I mean, they, they, if they're competitive, I mean, they can be competitive on how they look as well. I mean, I don't think we should regulate them all to look the same, then that's their, that's part of the art of a food truck. I mean, food trucks are art also.
But do you wanna create, potentially create a carnival atmosphere? I mean, if, that may well be their personality, but if they're going to be conducting business in a public right-of-way, is that what you wanna end up having there? You know? So-
Don't bother me, I guess. I mean, if, if one wants to look like a carnival and one wants to look like a bistro, that's fine.
I'm trying to pit this against what our existing sign ordinances and that are, and they're-
These go away.
They're pretty uncreative, I think, of what our existing sign ordinances are. So this would really be-
It would be adding color.
It may well be just a nice, bold measure, you know, in a new direction.
And they're not permanent, they go away.
Yeah, right.
You know, so I think they should be able to come with their personality. I mean, that's how they serve their food. Somebody's got good light, good color, good personality, might stop there and try their food.
Maybe that's how they create their market.
Yeah, absolutely, they do.
Well, we have a planning consultant, and we have a planning commission. I'll say it again, I think that they should have these lists presented to them, and let them decipher which ones are important and not important for this city. That's why we have them.
Right, I know, you've said that a number of times, and we are all saying that we'd like to go through this, so I don't know why you're so resistant to it.
I just said, that's where I feel it should be coming from, 'cause that's why we have those commissions.
I know, I don't agree with that, so I think we should just kinda start working.
Mr. Mayor?
Joe?
So, just in the interim of us doing this, just so I'm clear, thirty days, and what happens after that for Mr. Lindsay, or let's say anybody else who doesn't apply, or may apply to similar circumstances as him? How do we, where do we go from here? 'Cause I think that's what a lot of people are wondering at this point.
There's no law that says we can't extend it.
That's what I was trying to ask, then. So would that, that would be the next step? We'd extend it after thirty days and give them a temporary permit?
You'd have to reapply, but yeah, I mean, there's nothing saying that. I don't see anything that says that we can't, it can't be extended.
Is there something on the record that says we're gonna keep it going?
No. The bottom line is this, you have to reapply after the thirty days. I mean, as long as he's in compliance with everything else, I mean, that's his option.
I'm just speaking out here, I'm just curious, like, where that is, like, what, what there is to comply to since some things were drafted. I'm just being the devil's advocate, that, you know, he's been in business-
Okay, please, no comments from the audience. He can come up to the microphone, but-
So, this is all I've done, food is all I've done since I've been thirteen years old, I'm forty-three. So I'd like to give you some feedback to help guide this conversation, 'cause you're, you're lumping a whole lot into one thing, and food is the most unique industry that exists. So you're lumping Lindsay's smoker in with a food truck. They are completely separate. Food trucks have become very popular because they're unique items, it's a different licensing, smoker falls under a different license. So you have to separate the two, you can't lump them together. Okay, that's not fueled, that's fueled by wood, not by anything else. It's a toad, you know, it becomes part of his business.
Right, but I'm, but see, that's our problem. We can't just focus on one aspect of it. We have to focus on-
They're too separate.
I understand that, but you're gonna have the same people coming in saying, okay, what about a food truck?
I'm not disagreeing that you have, you need an ordinance or something to accommodate food trucks. But when you mentioned downtown Ann Arbor, which is my territory, the reason Ann Arbor has now designated those areas is because there is no parking, there's nowhere for them to go. What draws food trucks to South Lyon is a massive amount of people, which would be Pumpkin Fest, when the Witch's Hat puts on a big event, or we put tents into a parking lot. So you're putting a cart in front of the horse. It's like, let's make a food truck ordinance, but we're not defining what we're using it for. Food trucks aren't just gonna pull up and park somewhere if there's nothing going on. If there's no people here, you're not gonna have a food truck. So you have to kind of redefine, what is our concept gonna be when we allow food truck in? So not a designate, you know, if, if Witch's Hat is doing an event, for them to park all the way uptown, there's not gonna be any people there. So it's gotta be mobile, whether it's, you can define public and private, all those, to have a license in the city can be minimal, or they just reapply, or have a re, pardon me, reoccurring, providing that they're inspected. The biggest issue is whether or not they have proper sanitation, and whether they're preparing raw product, or if it's cooked product on it. But the, the, the issue that you're faced with right now is, how are you gonna govern when to allow a food truck? And it's gotta be based around when we have large amounts of folks. So when we do terrific T-ball day down in McCatty Park, do you want a food truck coming on that property? That kinda thing. If it's a public location, how are you gonna govern that? But whether to have a designated area is not gonna work, the, the whole concept behind them is that it's mobile.
That's not accurate. That could work, just fine. There are many faces to this whole issue. That's why it's, it's going to be complicated and deliberate to end up coming to a final product. There's going to be a great deal of different iterations of how this can be successful. So it's not going to be one thing.
And I think we have, I think we have, we have two brew houses in town that, that serve drinks and no food. I mean, that's a perfect reason to have them every day, as far as I'm concerned. I, I mean, they have, you know, I mean, I tend to like to go to the brew houses, and I need some food there, too. And if I can walk outside and get a food truck food that's there on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Monday, that makes me happy. So we have, we have that. The, the brew houses in our town are becoming destination places. It's not just people from South Lyon who are coming here drinking, or enjoying their-
Enjoying South Lyon.
That came out a little wrong. It's, it's, they're coming, people are coming there on a regular basis. They're meeting there after work from Northville, they're meeting there after work from Plymouth. And so we do have a reason to have a food truck in our town Monday through Sunday.
I totally agree with that. What I'm saying is, you have two separate, you're lumping somebody who's catering to a specific location, and he has a brick-and-mortar business that's not fueled by gasoline or anything else, it's a wood smoker, and you're lumping that with a food truck, there-
Well, when he's out on the street with his smoker, he's street food. Nobody thinks of him as a brick-and-mortar building who is coming in from Northville. They see him out on the street, whether he's in a truck, or he's just standing there with a smoker, he's now street food.
There's nothing so substantially different from what his service is from the service of a food truck, that we can't package the language of regulating that-
Yep.
And prevent, or in protecting the community on behalf of, you know, this kind of activity.
I mean, it's, you know, we say food truck, 'cause we have to call it something, but it's street food, is what it is. I mean, there's street food all over the world, and that's what we're trying to bring. But when he's serving food in a parking lot, he's, he's a street food vendor. When he's serving it out of his brick-and-mortar place, he's a restaurant.
But see, that's actually what we're looking at right now, one of these thirty bullet points, because you're right, there are separate, you know, functions that people are doing. You have somebody that's working at Witch's Hat on a weekend with a smoker, then you have other people that are come, wanting to come in with a food truck. So those are actually two bullet points on here that we have to address. How do we wanna address everything under one ordinance? So that's, that's what we're faced with right now. You're right, it's a totally different concept, but it's still, it's something that can be towed out of the lot.
But how it loops, this is where the confusion is with the whole entire state of Michigan, because how you are, to loop them together, if a food, a food truck comes in, they're not brick-and-mortar.
Neither is the smoker.
But, well, it's, the licensing and how it's inspected is covered under the brick-and-mortar restaurant.
Understand.
So the licensing is different. That's what I'm, if you have a smoker, but you, you don't have your business here, then it is treated differently. Same in Ann Arbor. If you own a restaurant in Ann Arbor, and you own a food truck, that's an extension of your business. You have to follow what their guidelines are for sanitation and for gray water disposal, as opposed to the guys that come in and rent space there. So yes, it is, it may be a street vendor, but it's not a food truck.
Now, this is all the stuff that planning can, can go through. I'm not kidding, I mean, you, you're-
But you're governing the conversation.
You've just spent, I don't know how much time here, trying to determine what the definition of the food truck industry is. I'd like us to actually have a conversation amongst ourselves to determine what direction we see as being the ultimate way this will, will be regulated.
Brian, you're hitting the nail right on the head. We are a small community that's growing, and we wanna make sure we do it right. And that's, that's part of the problem with these growing pains. I mean, we're, we're talking, when I moved into South Lyon in ninety-eight, there wasn't, the population has doubled since then. You have Lyon Township growing up, you know, all around us, bringing in all these new people. That's the problem we're having. We need to do this right. I know time is of the essence of some people, and we're trying to get it done, and believe me, this is on the, the front burner. We just wanna make sure that we're in a situation where we address your concerns, your definitions between a smoker and a food truck, and we wanna get them right in an ordinance that it's uniform. And that's the issue we're facing right now. I mean, we can't, I mean, how many communities have done this overnight?
The time, the essence of time right now, I mean, we found a solution for the most immediate concern. So time really isn't the biggest problem that we've got right now, is trying to determine what we see as the direction this policy needs to take.
So, I know you're sick to me now, but a lot of people are here for Chad tonight, so I think what people want the answer on, and what they wanna hear from the city government, is that, you know, he's, he's going to be allowed to continue his brick-and-mortar on the other private property, have his private property there, continue what he's doing, that he's been doing for months, and that he's not just getting a thirty-day, you know, license to keep going to get you guys through election. I think that's really what a lot of people that have come here, and I know the mayor's rolling his eyes at me, and that's fine.
That's so untrue.
But, 'cause I just saw him, but I know a lot of people are here for him tonight, and they just wanna make sure that he's gonna be able to keep going past thirty days. So I may be wrong, but I know that's why a lot of people are here.
The point I'm trying to make is, I'm not up for reelection. I'm one of the people doing a lot of the talking right now.
Three of us are sitting here irrespective of what the election results are, we're every bit as interested in finding the answers to this as anybody that's running right now.
Right, and I know, but that's why a lot of people wasted their time to come here tonight, so they can make sure that he can operate beyond thirty days. So I know that that's what people wanna hear from city council, that this isn't just a temporary thing, that they're going to allow him to keep going past these thirty days, as he has been for months.
Mr. Mayor?
Joe?
I don't know that people will be satisfied with a thirty-day temporary order.
I, yeah, as a board, I'm only one individual, so I can't speak on behalf of the board, but myself, I've been vocal about this. I would be comfortable with giving him a renewal as needed until we finish an ordinance. I don't think it's fair to put him out of business, just because we're not to where we need to be.
And I think that we already, we already said that. We said that he can-
Okay.
That's already been, that's already been-
That's, we said that he could renew.
But, okay.
And as long as it's like, it is today.
Okay, Ryan? Ryan?
So I'm gonna try not to take a lot of time. So I, I think what a lot of us wanna hear is that, you know, everyone is for this in some capacity, but we're not really hearing that, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna make this happen. And I understand it's the cart before the horse kinda thing, that you guys have to figure out exactly how to make it happen. But, you know, it's frustrating on our end to see, like, well, what does that look like? You're all saying, yes, let's just get it to planning commission and let, but, I mean, you haven't even heard from the brick-and-mortar businesses and the restaurants in town, you know, who, who knows what we, and they want.
That's questions on our list.
I know, they're questions, but-
That's why we're at the first step.
And I'm totally, I would love to just dive into all these questions with you guys, believe me, but, um-
And I think you should have the opportunity.
Yeah, come sit up here for a while and see what's in there.
I think you should have the opportunity. I, I hope somebody comes out and polls the, the businesses that we have. I hope that's part of it, you know? I hope you have an opportunity.
That's kind of our fear, too, is there's, we all know there's so much work that needs to go into this. And we haven't heard a definitive, yes, as, as a council, as a board, we are gonna make this happen. We're gonna bring, you know, food vending, or mobile food trucks into this town. It's just, I support it, I support it.
I brought it up, so I don't know how more I can tell you that, yes, I want it.
But is that how, I guess, I just don't know how ordinances work. I mean, is, is this gonna happen? Or is it go to planning, and there, I'm sure it can get derailed, things can happen, and, you know, we just want to-
It seems most likely this, this is likely to take place. It's hard to envision that there would be enough negative repercussions from this type of activity that we would say it would be in our best interest to prohibit this, this stuff. It's just that, in what version is it going to end up being allowed, that's all.
And then, I mean, hearing that, I mean, what, you know, it, like I said, I'm all for you guys discussing all of these things, but if we're gonna discuss until we're blue in the face, and there's not a definitive, you know, we're gonna push this through and make it happen, you know, I mean, here, it, I don't know, we still have to talk to all the businesses, get, get input, research, I know there's so many different things that have to happen. All, all while you're giving Chad a temporary, which is great, but you're stopping it from happening elsewhere in town. You mentioned the farmer's market.
And that was our concern. Okay, so will people be emboldened by thinking, well, Chad got this, so we're gonna end up pushing to have this over here? We were worried about that, by not being able to manage the different scenarios that might end up presenting themselves. Yours seemed like a natural. You had a relationship, you had, as it turns out, the land use issue was not a circumstance that caused us concern. that caused us concern. The extension of what was already existing made perfect sense. This thing came, came out of the blue, I can only speak for myself, but I had no idea that we had no regulations about this type of activity. It's kind of startling, actually, with all the nonsense things that it seems like we have ordinances for, that something that would be a real thing, we have no way to manage or protect the community from people that aren't doing it properly. So, but that doesn't change the fact that this, your situation, you have the benefit of pretty much being golden unless there's a performance issue where you're not complying with what your obligations are.
No, I know, and I'm not, I'm not just trying to speak on my-
I have to ask, or say one more thing. You said, okay, are we going to talk about this until we're blue in the face? That's very difficult to envision at the very first step of the discussions. So you don't go from the first step to blue in the face quickly.
No, I know, but there's so many sides to it. And that's all I'm saying, like, I just didn't know if, you know, a discussion here is, you know, you said have it go to Planning Commission. I mean, do we have a voice in Planning Commission? Here there's a voice, and that's what everyone's saying.
Yes, you can speak it there, yes.
I'd like to see-
I guess it's just, you know, I, is there a way to, and I'm just, you know, I don't know how it all works, is there a way to do a resolution that, you know, those that are trying to get temporary permits, while this is being hashed out, if it's 10 months, like you said, or whatever else, you know, is there a way that we can plan our businesses and our days out more than 30 days at a time? Or is that just something that we're going to have to kind of just wait and see, I guess?
Well, yours, yours doesn't seem like it's a real mystery, but I could see other people that would like to have the opportunity, certainly they're going to be compromised if we can't, it seems to me that we should be able to evaluate things sort of on the fly. If they're of the same circumstance, you have a private location that's, that's not going to be an impediment to abutting businesses and things of that nature, I don't know why it would end up being, having a different outcome than what you've had. So, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing my own two cents worth in there, but I don't think that has to be encumbered by the whole comprehensive package.
To answer your question, I think we're all in support of this. I haven't heard anyone say anything against it. So that's, that's a very important first step.
Okay.
Second step, we've kind of addressed some of the issues, but you're right, we have to talk to the brick and mortar establishments to get their opinion. If it goes to Planning Commission, that will be a great opportunity for the brick and mortar establishments and the establishments that want food vendors to come in to help format what kind of direction this is going with as far as the ordinance. We will have impact because we'll hear, you know, we'll have an idea if the Planning Commission has questions, they'll ask us, but that's the process that I think it needs to go through. Once everybody's on board at the Planning Commission, meaning the vendors, the brick and mortar establishments, the establishments that want food trucks, smokers, every other type of contraption that serves food, then it comes back to us for a first reading. At that point, if everyone's happy with it, second reading, and then it's done. It's almost like that, that Saturday morning thing about, I'm just a bill, and the whole process, how it works. But the bottom line is, that's what has to be done. You know, it can't be just done overnight, because we want to make sure it's correct. We want to make sure they're-
Sesame Street thing.
Yeah, there you are, whatever. But, uh, we want to make sure that everybody has a voice, everybody has an opportunity to say what they want, so when it comes to us, it's a done deal.
Correct.
And that's what we have to get to. But those are the steps that need to be taken. And I want you at the Planning Commission saying, this is what we want, this is what we envisioned, this is our idea, so they could frame it in the ordinance that comes up to us.
Joe.
Thanks.
So, I understand the concern, and then, and I, because I have it myself. It's that things are going to get bogged down in the system, it's going to take forever, and it's not going to get resolved. If I was sitting where you are, I see, I have the same concerns.
I heard he has taken forever.
It has. And, but what I think has happened tonight and over the past two weeks is that we, as a government, have been awoken and brought aware of how Witch's Hat and Lindsay's been treated, and hopefully that will be a lesson going forward, that this will be resolved a little more smooth. And unfortunately, I know we, our city manager's on medical, but I'm sure she'll review this tape, and I would hope that this is used as a learning for her. So, going forward, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
And we all have email addresses on the city site, so please feel free to use them. If you want to know what the progress is going, send an email. That's the best way of getting attention. I mean, other than coming here tonight and pretty much telling us what you want, but make sure to follow up, use an email.
Hi, I'm Camaro Clark. I live in town as well as own a business, 22912 Pontiac Trail. I just want to say a couple of real quick things. First, I think a lot of us here don't know how this works, so we're not sure when we can ask questions or how we're supposed to do that. So, you know, feel free to guide us, because we're really not sure. Secondly, I just want to mention a couple of things. I have the same concerns everybody else has said, and I think everybody has had valid points. I understand that this is going to take a good deal of time, and I would hope that it did. You guys are going to have a lot to research and think about while doing this, and I know there's probably a huge array of, you know, different things that you'll have to look at. I think part of the concern, I know my concern, I think Brian was trying to say, as well as Chad, that Chad's, you know, is looked at really as an extension of his business, okay? And unfortunately, I think it's a little bit of a unique situation, so even though we didn't have anything in the books, I think it would have been nice if, when it was, you know, because he did take the initiative to come to, you know, the city and to come to the police and try to find out, what do I need to do? You know, he'd been operating this way for quite a while, so it would have been nice if it could have been handled in a different manner to where, you know, I mean, goodness, I can remember starting my business 15 years ago and having to jump through hoops and whatnot, but to have the Witch's Hat, a wonderful business in town, and Chad try to work together to promote each other, to do, you know, benefit everybody in the town, that's just something that, to me, it's a shame that it's had to be shut down the way it has. Now, I'm appreciative and grateful that he's been issued a 30-day permit, and I think, then my concern would be, okay, which I think you guys have addressed, it shouldn't, he shouldn't have any problem renewing as long as he's not doing anything different. He has full approval of the health department, he has, you know, the fire department, they've all approved him, so there's, there's nothing with that. But I think that was part of my coming and wanting to know, okay, this, you know, as a small business owner, it is a struggle every day, and when things are thrown in the loop, I personally am weather dependent, but when things are thrown in, you know, wrenches are thrown in, it makes it difficult, you know, being a small business owner, you don't have a lot of money to work with. So, for example, if you have setbacks like this, it can be very detrimental to your well-being. And I would hate to see a small business go out of business because of something like this, that to me could just, you know, bless you, be handled. So I appreciate all your time and effort. I appreciate you guys, you know, taking this seriously and coming up with a plan. I just hope that we can come up with, you know, we have some kind of temporary solution that will be beneficial for everybody going forward, and we won't have, I feel like, this rocky road that we're treading on right now. You know, he can, he can know, he can open up for business, he can get all his stuff, he can be down there selling, and he doesn't have to worry he's going to be ticketed or shut down. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Harvey asked to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond to the first part of your comments, that one of the advantages of taking this to the Planning Commission is that's what they do. They promote the regulations that allow businesses and the rest of what we do here in town to operate on a uniform basis. You're not going to hear any one of us up here, unless we're suicidal, saying we don't support small businesses or any business. But the Planning Commission, they're uniquely qualified for this. They have the planning consultant that works right with them, that can answer most of these questions because he has the intimate knowledge of these. We don't have that luxury. So, I think you're, the first part of your question to us was, was an excellent one, and that's probably why it's very best that we push all of this, and starting with the three questions that Aaron asked, to the Planning Commission, let them do their work. They're open forum, you all are welcome there, I hope, but they have public comment, and, you know, you can be heard there. So, please, please respect that process as we're trying to respect that process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just so you know, I sit up here on the board, I own a small business in town, so I am a small business owner on this board.
Glenn.
Yeah, the whole idea of ordinances and zoning is typically not a linear trajectory when you're going through the whole thing. So it's, it's a really difficult landscape to make sense of and know that, that you're on a path of establishing your business plan in a manner that you're likely to end up having success, because there's all kinds of weird relationships with zoning and land use that don't necessarily seem like naturals. You had made the comment that this was simply an extension of Chad's original brick and mortar business. That's actually where things went south, because it's absolutely not the case. Chad being at Witch's Hat is an ancillary business to the Witch's Hat's business being conducted on that property. We just went through a situation, I don't know if you remember, the guy wrapping the boats up for winter over on the Tube Mills property. We're kind of assuming that it's a natural that that kind of thing can be done on a temporary basis. There are no regulations, if, if the Tube Mill wrapped boats for part of their business, it could have been conducted there if they went to Planning Commission and got the land use exemption for being able to conduct that. But that's not the case, because it wasn't their primary business. It was a secondary ancillary business asking for permission to do it on their property. There's no ordinance vehicle that allows that kind of conduct. So, that's what I mean, you can kind of make assumptions that everything seems to be going in the right direction, and it's who's harmed by it. It's just a simple matter of the ordinances aren't written like that, and the interrelationship of the ordinance and land use with zoning can get really convoluted.
And I understand what you're saying. What I meant, just to clarify, was the smoker and him running the smoker, the food he serves off the smoker, because that is all done through Lindsay's hometown pizza, that's how the health department regulates it, that is an extension, to me, in my mind, that is an extension-
His license is tied to that, but his operation there is-
Right, that is an extension of his business. Well, as far as the Witch's Hat, no, I think that's just two great businesses getting together and saying, hey, how can we help each other and help this town and make people happy? That's how I see that.
That's why we wanted to figure out how to make it work. That's right.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, one thing I was thinking about throughout this whole process was, actually, Camaro, you, that kind of reminded me, saying two businesses working together, helping each other. And I noticed on the actual permit that there's set times and dates. I mean, the times seem revisitable, but I did want to ask Chad, actually, previously, how many days a week were you allowed to smoke? Or, not allowed, but you were smoking, just-
Before, I was going three or four up there, and then if they had special events, I would come up for that.
Okay. So, so the issue, go ahead.
They had it open to me when they would, they would have loved to have me there every day.
Okay. So what I'm getting at is, we've already established that we're great, whatever happened over the past two weeks, we have a temporary solution, we're moving forward, the city council's okay with giving you this permit, we've established that. Now where I have a little, I don't want to say take issue, but have a little concerns, is that the restrictions that we're putting on you, not necessarily the times, but the days, I think it should be, we issued this permit, but let's say 30 days go forward, I think it should be up to the two businesses to decide how many days, because if we're saying it's okay to be there, we should leave it up to the two businesses, and we should stay out of it a little bit, in my opinion.
But see, that's my concern, there's no uniformity. If we give one business 30 days, then we have to make sure we give another business 30 days. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but there, to further expand on an answer I gave earlier, we have the luxury of getting the ball rolling by instructing our city attorney to start looking at this ASAP, and also instructing the Planning Commission to start working on this ASAP. That is one of the luxuries we do have as a city council, and I think that's been said tonight. That's what we want to have done, and they will do it.
But we've set a precedent, letting them go on for a year. I think it's time that we step back a little bit. We have the permits, we keep the times, but 30 days after now, like I said, leave it up to the Witch's Hat and Lindsay's to decide how many days. Keep, that's my opinion.
But the issue is not, we don't want to keep issuing temporary permits, we want to get this done.
No disagreement, absolutely.
So, I mean, that's the issue that I think we have the luxury of doing by instructing our city attorney, the planning consultant, and the Planning Commission to start working on this ASAP. I mean, that's what you're hearing tonight, that's what we can do, and I think that's what we're doing.
I just want to set some flexibility on this, is all, sorry, Glenn, I apologize.
Well, two, two public or private businesses that form a relationship is going to have a different, it's going to be a different conduct than what you're going to have in a public forum. You know, the road right away, at the ball field, in the park, whatever. I mean, if they want to have a relationship that goes every single day, why on earth would we have a concern about that?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify on that issue, and Mr. Rizzi wasn't involved in the actual permit issuing process, so he wouldn't have a way to know this, but the revised application turned in by Mr. Lindsay today included dates or days of the week and times that Mr. Lindsay requested. The permit was approved exactly as Mr. Lindsay requested.
And I apologize if I was misinformed, I guess I was making a general comment that I think it should be up for discussion, I wasn't trying to argue with anybody, so thank you.
Wasn't there a blanket before, though, that he tried just sun bits, Monday through Sunday, or Monday through Saturday? There was a permit that came in before that wasn't going to fly, or am I wrong there?
Doesn't come to us, I don't know.
It may have been sent to the city manager. I don't know.
I can address that if you want me to address questions from the audience.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, that was what I wanted to say, was, I think, because, you guys do have a lot of work before you here, but unfortunately, right now, we're in a unique situation that is kind of here and in front of us, that, that I would hope that you guys can address. And so as far as him not having restrictions, I'm not sure, I thought there was a, I'm not sure he can address that, but if he is going to be there four days a week or seven days a week, you know, I would hope that you guys would look at that and say, okay, well, it shouldn't matter. They're, right now, you guys have to make a decision, obviously, hopefully, that's what we're trying to do, is come to some kind of resolution today. So, just as Mr. Rizzi said, if you're going to do it, you know, there should, I just don't see what the point, it would be nice if there weren't restrictions, is what I'm trying to say. If he's going to be there four days a week, or five days a week, or if they have a special event, does he have to apply for new permit? If he's going to be there, you know, he's complying with the health, the fire, to me, it should be, he can be there Monday through Sunday.
Well, he filled out the-
Again, that's what he requested, is what he got.
I guess that's where we, I guess, then, can I, can I address you, Chief Collins, and ask?
That would be up to the mayor and council.
Okay.
I would be, I-
That's my question, was, was there a blanketed time that he couldn't do it before? Or, if not, then is it okay if we amend that and make it? Because I think he came in today and kind of expeditiously did all that, trying to be helpful.
He got what he requested.
Okay. So would it be okay if he amends that and says that he, does he need to reapply or what?
How about we let our attorney weigh in on what his concerns might be about that?
Are there any concerns? I mean, with, I mean, the bottom line is, until we get this enacted, we don't want to interfere with businesses.
That is what I am trying to say. I apologize for interrupting, that's what I was trying to-
That's fine.
As to the days of the week and the hours, I believe that was at Mr. Lindsay's request. To the extent that he's looking for something different, I think we'll be willing to listen and evaluate. I don't know what he's asking for, other than seven days a week. The original request was seven days a week for a year, which was not approved. We're trying to put him in a position where he can continue this type of activity, subject to us getting an ordinance in place, with the knowledge that once we have an ordinance in place, to the extent it applies to his activity, he's going to have to comply with the new ordinance. So the idea was not to just do 30 days and cut him off, it's to have a reasonable period of time for us to do our work and him to continue the activity that he wants to engage in, subject to the, what we believe are reasonable restrictions and conditions on that activity. And to, if, I wasn't part of the conversations, but it's my understanding that he requested these dates and times, so.
I think, but you had said he originally requested seven days for a year, but that was rejected, so he went and did specific dates. So that was my question, was couldn't he do then seven days for the 30-day time period and then apply for a renewal?
I don't want to speak for Chief-
Something is determined that we would be concerned about, you don't want to end up having given free rein for a year when you find out six weeks into it that we really need to, there's an unintended consequence for that, that schedule. So that's why the, the idea of having a sunset that's renewable-
Which would be-
Protection to, to regulate that.
Okay, I guess my concern was just, why not say, you know, it could be any day, you know what I'm saying?
He got what he wanted the first time for 30 days? Have him submit something else for a 30-day period, and then we'll address it at that point. Until we know what he's asking for, it's kind of hard to speculate, as far as, does he want 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with lights and music and all that stuff? Until we know what that is, it's kind of hard to speculate. So the bottom line here, it was approved with the what he wanted before, have him resubmit something else.
Okay. I guess it's hard for me, because he'd been doing this already for six months with no problems until, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say, I ran a quite large automotive supplier for 32 years, and I can see everybody's point here, I can certainly see this gentleman's point, I mean, he's trying to run his business here. And I don't think any of you have enough time to go behind the lines and research, because there's more than just the city ordinance here, there's federal, there's state. I mean, you know, you say a carnival, I don't think you want a carnival atmosphere, because you want a carnival atmosphere, because what, how do you know this guy's coming into your town? He's got this food truck, he's got the proper insurance and stuff. Who's gonna check all that? I don't think you guys have enough time to dig into. Certainly, you can discuss it, but I think it needs to go way beyond you guys, to find out what is the legal, what is legal, what is not legal. It goes beyond the city.
So, in terms of amending his permit, if you guys said he couldn't be approved for, for twenty-four seven, which obviously, sign can be out there twenty-four seven...
He'd be serving breakfast.
Well, I don't think you smoke a lot of ribs for breakfast, but, so, if that couldn't be approved, and he had to compromise and put on specific dates and times, can you put it on the permit that it's at will for them, and whenever the two of them work out, that they can say, these are the days we're doing it this week, these are the days we're doing it next week, instead of specific days and hours? You guys don't want to tie yourself to something, they want some kind of guarantee, you know. I understand why Joe doesn't want to get him pinned into a tight number of hours that no one's willing to expand, so why can't you just word it to be as, at will? That it's at the will of the two business owners?
That's not appropriate. What if...
Well, that's less than seven days, and it's more than four, it's, it's at their will.
What if the witch's hat is not open, and he's cooking out...
Then that would not be at their will. That would be at their will to mutually decide. If we were at, at the will of the two business owners mutually, that would solve everything's issue.
I think he's gonna want his regular routine established, so people know when to expect it there, and so forth, too.
That can be at the will of those two business owners. If he has a special event, he's gonna want him more than just Monday through Sunday.
If they set a certain pattern, people know what to expect, what time. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got it. Thank you.
I'm just curious if we can amend that to be at will.
No.
No. Chad's behind you. Thank you.
I think the biggest concern is, the thirty day, there's a lot of events that the witch's hat book out more than the thirty days and stuff. And that, that's one, only thing, well, I think, the biggest concern is, now, I got the permit and everything, I just put down the hours that I'm normally up there. If they have a special event, I don't, I think everybody's concerned about if I forget to put that special day down there when I apply for the permit. That's why I think they're more or less just saying, open-ended, more, even if it's during witch's hat hours.
But if you have a special event that's coming up, can't you just resubmit your application, saying, hey, in addition to this, you can amend it, can't you?
That's considered approved.
That's what, that's what I'm asking, is if it can be...
Well, no, I'm saying, is there nothing stopping you from coming down and saying, look, I have a thirty day permit right now, but witch's hat just announced something for Thursday, when I'm not working. I wasn't planning on work that day, or Tuesday. Can I get permission to work that event? We just want to know what's going on, as far as the event you're working, the hours, that's it.
Right. Well, no, that's what, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a simple...
But I, I mean, you know what I mean?
I, I don't think that's really difficult to do. I mean, if something comes up, sure, we're gonna be amendable to it, but we would like to know what it is when we issue the permit. That's it.
And that's why we have permanent staff on duty to deal with that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're, you're getting the sense that I don't think it's gonna be a problem, I hope.
I, well, I'm hope, yeah. Me too, believe me, that's not...
So, I'm just saying, the reason we want to know, is if there's something that changes, we have a record of it, so we know. So, there won't be an issue with the police department or anything like that shutting you down again. That's the concern, so that's what we want to know.
All right. Thank you. And I want to thank Chief Collins for all the work he did.
To get back to what I was saying earlier, exactly what you just had three of them come up and discuss, is why I said there's a difference between a food truck and a smoker that's used as a caterer. That's the concern. So, on Saturday, if they end up booking, or anybody books a band, hey, Chad, can you bring the smoker, it's Friday at seven-thirty at night, is he gonna be able to call chief, who's acting as the manager, and add that hour? That's what the concern is. It's a difference between this specific situation as a, someone who's using their smoker as a catering tool, in addition to his business, at a proprietor's location who doesn't serve food, isn't the same as a food truck, and this situation now is handcuffing somebody from making money if it's on a weekend or a Sunday, if he didn't put that day down. That's what they're trying to explain.
Right. And what we're trying to do is say that, look, we don't have anything on the books right now, so technically, like what happened a week ago, that could happen. What we're saying is, we are more than happy to issue a temporary permit.
That's not what he said. He said, can't you apply for Thursday?
No, 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 listen, no, no, please.
He doesn't know what the catering's gonna be.
Please, this is what I was trying to say.
That's what he's trying to explain.
This is what I'm trying to say. We don't have anything on the books right now. That's why Chad was shut down in the first place. Okay? Just let me finish.
Actually, you did.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do, is saying that we will issue a temporary permit, okay? Thirty days, so that we can address this issue. So, he can continue to do what he's been doing. All right? That. Now, if there's something coming, Friday, I'm hoping that's one of the days he's working. All right, Chad, are you working Fridays? Where are you? Okay, so that would be covered in that timeframe. My, the, what I suggested earlier about mending the thirty day permit, was if it was on a Monday or a Tuesday, and a day that he was not planning to work. We have to somehow regulate this by, and that's why we're, that's why we're issuing these permits.
I don't share that, saying you have a little concern.
He's saying, how's he gonna come to at that odd hour if Ryan needs catering? Hey, we got a band up here, can we get him down here?
What he's asking, what he's asking for, is flexibility, which you could easily do, as saying, during his normal business hours, Sunday, you know, Monday through Saturday. He's not gonna be selling, he's not gonna be working a smoker and selling food at three-thirty in the morning. He's asking, if an event comes up, and he, he would need seven days. He needs flexibility of seven days, is what he's asking for.
And what we're suggesting is, if he comes in with a new permit and says, look, I would like seven days a week, no, listen to me.
Yes, that's what he wants.
That's what I'm saying. Seven days a week, for this period of time. That's what we're suggesting he does. That's all.
It should be driven by the principle of location.
I, I think that we are good, and I know we all want to just have this blanket thing. I think we're good, as long as you guys are pretty sure. And I'm, I'm not trying to speak over you if this is not true. On my end, if you guys are open to, if, I'm gonna add a, a random day, you know, it's up to us to do our due diligence, to make sure that we are planning appropriately as well. If you guys are open to him amending this permit, you know, I think everyone's concern is, this permit just came out of nowhere after being told that this is not allowed. So, it's like we're just kind of floating an air out here. But if everyone is open to when this happens, then it's not an issue, then, I mean, me personally, I'm good with it. I, I am comfortable with what you guys are proposing. Yes, we all know it's a long road, why don't you get to work on it, obviously? Maybe we could have been talking about it for an hour, you know, actually get moving forward with this thing. But it's just, everyone's still heated over it. So, my major concern is, who makes this decision? Is it city manager? Is it Chief Collins? When all this came down on Chad, we could not get answers as to who made this decision, and then we finally heard who made the decision. It was like, no one knew. Was it a fire issue, was it a police issue? Like, where, where did the, the decision come from?
Because we don't have an ordinance, that's what's driving all of it. That's why we need to establish...
But now, there's a license under an ordinance that isn't there, that's allowing him to do something, you know, and, and that's where we're concerned. So, as long as, you know, I mean, I, we have your word, obviously, you can't do a resolution or anything, but if it's moving forward, it's not gonna be a problem, that's great. I would personally like to know who's gonna make that decision. Is it, do I call Lynn? Do I call, who do, who do we, Chad calls, or who do we call, if there is a hip, a hiccup, or, or does it, you guys, do you all clear it? Does it come between you all?
We are a city manager form of government.
Okay.
As voted by the people.
Okay.
So, I would just like to add, then, just, sorry, I know we've been talking about this a long time. So, if you were to make the request to the city manager, hey, I know we're set for Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we want to add Wednesday on there, next week, next Wednesday, I would hope that she would not give you any problems, and just say, you're all good. And that's my, that's my realistic approach.
I'm comfortable with that. We have to do that with permits and events that we do. We have to let you guys know ahead of time. I'm totally comfortable with that process.
I don't think you're gonna have a band pop up in eighteen hours, and suddenly have a band going. I mean, you're, I know you plan a little better ahead on that.
More than likely not, but, you know, it was, the, the, just, the restrictions is, it's a little intimidating for, for a small business, and I get it. I'm not the one investing in all that food that he's investing in, and I understand. And, yeah, we, we do our due diligence, obviously, to plan our events and all that stuff. But I, I understand where they're coming at with the restrictions. Long as going forward, everyone is on board, and this is something that we're moving forward. I am comfortable with it, and I appreciate that everyone is for this, moving forward. So, thank you.
I'll tell you from my own two cents, I don't understand why we would want to micromanage this. I think it should be driven by witch's hats operating hours, not from Chad's operating hours. I don't want him conducting, conducting his business that isn't completely associated with what you guys have going on. But outside of that, I don't understand why we would want anything, anything except for to know when you guys are open, he is available to, to perform his service. I don't, I don't get where we're benefited from anything less than that.
Limiting, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's, we probably weren't getting that across, but that's what we're trying to get across. We want to work with everyone. We do. And we just want to make sure we do it in a way that works for everybody. So, let's try it out, let's see how it works, and if we need to readjust, we'll readjust. It's just, again, small steps, that's what we're taking here.
Anyway, I would suggest that our temporary, there's fill-in city manager and attorney start the process to prepare this to go to planning commission. And let them establish, and they're gonna, they're gonna have a feel, they're gonna know, and let them establish where we're going with this.
Mr. Mayor.
We don't make the rules here now, and then tell the planning commission, now do it that way. Let the planning commission, with our paid consultant in the field, let us know what's the best way to go with this.
Mr. Mayor, I, I will address this further during the manager's report, but there is a meeting scheduled with the city attorney, the city planner, Mr. Cotton Gim, and Terry from Alexander's, to discuss some of these issues on Friday.
Who, who were all the people, again?
City planner...
Terry.
City attorney, Terry from Alexander's, Mr. Cotton Gim, and either the temporary city manager, or the real city manager, depending on who happens to be here on Friday during the meeting.
Sounds perfect, thank you. All right, I say Chad sparks up that smoker, I'm getting hungry. All this talk about food, now I'm hungry.
What day is this today?
Yeah, can he, can he work today?
All right. So, we agree we can move on to the next agenda item.
Can we work today?
And that is, the parks and wrecks needs a brandy, has, I know her maiden name Mills, I'm trying to remember her married name is, but then she had to resign, too many family commitments, and she did verbalize that to me again. And Jason, you know how to pronounce that?
Nezak.
Nezak, of nine fifty Westbrook Drive, has volunteered to step in for that position, and he has some experience, quite a bit, fifteen years' experience with parks and wrecks in two different communities. So, I think that's very beneficial to have somebody like that available. And may I stress, that I have no other apps for anything sitting available down the road. We have totally nobody wanting to be on commissions and stuff right now. I keep asking for them, and I understand, people are always busy, but we're really in bare bones, and I'm glad Jason has stepped forward on this.
That point of order, I'd, I'd like to get an understanding of why we're not completing the, going through this, this forum that we've all studied up. There wasn't a motion to move on, there wasn't approval.
What, for what? This is, this was a discussion item, and discussion, we basically have gotten, we know what we want. We've talked to the city manager...
No, well, well, it might be what you...
And I, well...
I'd like us to go through here and bullet point, by bullet point, and get an understanding of, if anyone's got a particular point of interest or direction, this would be a great time to, to put it on the floor, at the onset. If there's not a majority of people that think that this is important enough to talk about, that's fine, but I didn't get a sense of it.
I think we're, I got the consensus, we're content to where we're at right now with it, that's what I got.
I'd like a, a vote on that, whether or not people think that we should actually do what we were supposed to do tonight.
We discussed it.
I never had a problem discussing. I, I think it should be discussed, and I think it should be turned, this sheet should be turned in to the planning commission. I said that at the beginning, I, I don't have, I don't, I never have a problem discussing, I never have a problem getting education or getting information, I never have a problem. So, I'm good.
You're good with what?
Discussing, getting educated, getting information.
Don't do the thirty things that someone took the time to write down.
Hearing people's opinion. I'm good with all that, I'm always good with that, I'm always up for information.
I was content to have the planning commission go through those thirty items. We discussed several of them anyways.
Right.
I don't mind going through it. I mean, we're here, what time is it? I don't know. Another hour, if, whatever it takes, I'm fine.
I don't know that it has to take.
It doesn't have to.
All we have to do is kind of click through them.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
Some of them, some of them we won't be able to respond to, some of them are clearly something that we can have an opinion on.
And can we still turn them in?
I think that's a given.
When's the next planning commission? November. November? Can you get me the date of that, just so I can have mine ready? Thanks.
The first one's pretty straightforward. I mean, we can't talk about the food and other, and merchandise, so, no one seems to think that this should be one comprehensive ordinance, correct?
No, I think it should be limited to food, to begin with, and then we can, you see what kind of hiccups we get during the, this, you know, applying to food, and then we can go on to other merchandise. I guess so.
Yeah, I agree, food only. I mean, I don't know...
Okay, then, let's move on.
Okay.
Food. What's next?
Well, we also have a different...
You guys are gonna beat it to death. Okay, number two.
Well, that's just a bad attitude.
No, it's not. It's trying to get through this. We can't answer number two, can we?
I don't know if it can.
Well, I don't know if I, I mean, private property, I mean, I could have a smoker or...
We could have general rules, but there's, clearly, there's gonna be plenty of opportunities that need more detail.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Can we answer the question, position of existing restaurants and other food service establishments?
No.
Nope, not for us.
What potential customers want?
Yeah, that one can seem unneeded.
Okay, that's not for us.
Public.
What's the public want, whether it's concerned, that's not for us.
Everything, that's what they want.
Everything, okay. What's next, Glenn?
Oh, would a distancing requirement from existing restaurants or food service affect the, the interested parties? I don't know that we know that, but he can certainly project concerns.
So, the planning commission would probably do that, right? As part of the drafting ordinance?
Probably with some input with restaurants, yeah.
Good, let's move on.
As to public property, should the vendors be allowed to locate on public property? Can we answer that? Do we know the liability cost there, or involvement? Whose, whose liability covers what?
Well, I mean, the issue is parks versus public, I mean, are we gonna allow them on parks?
Well, not every public site is gonna be equal, so that's going to end up being a pretty broad reaction to those things.
So, is that something the planning commission should deal with?
Oh, man. I think I'm gonna take a bath and break.
No answer on that one, and we'll move on to, should a food vendor permit be limited or as to time? Well, that's what we're trying to determine, and that's where the planning commission's gonna have to determine that.
Well, the underlying zoning thing, it's clearly, clearly, planning will have a lot better insight into the impacts from that.
The next one's interesting, do we want to put a limit?
Yeah, that one's a multi, multi-passenger.
Yeah, but, do you want to limit the number of food truck permits, or smokers, or...
Right.
That are issued?
And that one's, I think that the idea of starting with private property makes a great deal of sense. We can kind of get a, a basic understanding of the direction that's, that's likely to be needed to, to regulate things, and, and kind of expand from that.
So, there should be, I mean, should it, should there be a limitation, or should it be a situation where whoever applies gets it?
For public?
No, just for in general. I mean, if I come in, if I want to bring a food truck, or if I want to bring in, should we, as a council, say, we want a limitation on the number of permits, so that the planning commission can come up with an idea on the number of permits that should be issued based on...
Well, I think that would be kind of site-specific, you know, I mean, you're talking about at large. I mean, we have enough property that an awful lot of this activity can take place without it having a negative effect on, on anything. You know, there's a, say, there's a tournament down at McCatty Park, there's a soccer league tournament going on at Volunteer Park, you know, and, I mean, there's all kinds, and, and someone wants to have something, say, a private party, someone wants to have a birthday party with a food truck out at the curb side, and that's how they're going to cater the thing. I mean, those things aren't going to end up being in conflict with each other, so... I can't think of a rational...
So, maybe they can, maybe they can find some sample ordinances, and, and pick some of the better portions of those.
Certainly, I don't want us to reinvent this stuff.
Okay, all right. Then that takes care of that. What's moving on?
Should vendors be separated or assigned to different areas? Does that mean that we Does that mean that we gotta send them all to Ryan's parking lot? If we go that route, I mean, it's, again, you have your consultant and your planning commission to make these decisions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I'd like to just ask a question related to the limitations. So one of the concepts that was brought up was whether, providing for flexibility to some of the vendors as to date, time, and location, which raises one of the questions, would you want a one-time permit for a longer period of time, say a year, which would allow them to go anywhere on public property where you have a parking space, or you could designate different locations for different hours? Say McCaddy Park is, you know, normal hours, whatever, you choose those to be, city parking spaces in your downtown would be hours of whatever, and you're probably gonna be looking toward normal business hours, or at least when food service would be. Or do you try and limit, from an administrative standpoint, where we've kind of gone with Mr. Lindsay currently, is specific days, hours of operation at a specific location? And I think those are competing policy positions and strategies to deal with this. You could give a one-time permit and say, you get to do any of this for a year, and I think the private property might be a little different, you'd have to have consent of the owner to do that, and comply with whatever the normal requirements are. I think that would also apply to public property. But that's one of those strategy decisions that kind of takes you down a path that you're not gonna be able to come back and treat differently. So, and I've seen some of those ordinance where they give it a year, and I'm not, I didn't spend enough time yet to figure out what the limitations on location, if you're giving just a cart blanche, is there a restriction on days of the week, or hours of the day? And I think, that's where I think the input from the vendors and the restaurant owners would be helpful, what do they want? Do they wanna have that flexibility?
I'm sure that they wanna have as much freedom with it as they can get away with.
And could we come up with a way that there's different types of these, where you're granting somebody more cart blanche, as long as they are in those allowed locations and operating within hours? And if somebody wants to be specific location as to this, they could request that. I don't know that they're mutually exclusive, but it does take a little bit of understanding what the various interests are, and I think primarily in this instance, I'm focused on the vendors, what they really want, and how to get them there. But I think the, you know, we have, I'm also very concerned about the amount of, if every time Mr. Lindsay wants to come in and add a day, we have an administrative process that we have to ramp up and adjust a permit, is that a useful way to spend our time, given what he's really asking for? And there's balance there.
Right, as far as the public spaces, I would lean towards a limitation on the hours and the days, just because they're public spots, I don't, you know, like parking lot where the farmer's market is, I mean, I don't wanna...
Well, plus the idea of being able to regulate, I mean...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Now, private...
They could do a hit-and-run, you know, I've got a year, and I'm gonna do an hour and a half over here, without giving anyone notice that I'm there, and then shoot over here for...
But those are public spots, but as far as private locations, I think the biggest issue's gonna be the owner of the location. If the owner's fine with it, then I don't think, you know, there should be a limitation on it, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think the private...
And most vendors aren't gonna be working there when the owner's not there.
Right, right.
The owner drives it.
But I think my concern more lies with the limitations on the public.
Unless it's a vacant lot.
Right.
That's where I think you get into the...
Right, but, yeah, as long as the...
I mean, approval by the owner on a vacant lot?
Or an unattended after-business hours of a bank. If a truck rolls in and operates in a closed bank, you know, we have to answer the question, do they have the authority to be there?
Right.
On private property.
And I would hope that somebody be rolling up as quick as it was recognized and be asking him for documentation.
Is that after or before the burrito?
I'm sorry?
Is that before or after the burrito?
After or before the...
I'm sorry, I would...
No, but that's a concern during the...
I can't hear what he's saying.
But then, no, that's a good point, I mean, what happens, do you limit then to a private, like a private business, for the hours of operation that business is open? I mean, is that a limitation you put on it?
Yeah, and you're gonna get to the next question, one of the things that I'm interested in finding out council's position, and I think planning commission would be interested too, is, is there a way to take a first step here, do it in a fairly quickly manner, a quick manner, and try this out? I do still think there's a big distinction between private and public property, I think you could figure out a way to handle the private, I do think that the councilperson, Kopkowski's three issues plus the owner consent are your primary guides there. Do you comply with the code, is it safe, is it healthy, and is the owner gonna consent to it? The public, could you pick a spot and try this out? And see what the hours and dates, and do you attract enough people that are vendors? Do you attract enough customers? What is the feedback based on that particular location? And try it out, and I'm just kind of, but that's a policy decision to try it out and then see if you could expand it and scale it, or change locations based on input from the various stakeholders. That's one way to approach it, and I think that would get you something in place and working quicker than trying to answer every single possible question, and every single type of cart and truck and all this stuff. You know, maybe we hit, figure out and prioritize what are the biggest, most important things to us, and see if we can get something that's workable on it in short order. And maybe I've got pie, you know, that's pie in the sky too, I don't know. But that's really where I'm at with that bottom question on the page here, is, is there a way to put a toe in the water without jumping in the pool? And see if the water's cold, is it too hot, is it just right? And then learn from your initial steps, and see what needs to be adjusted.
So, my opinion, if, I think you almost have to have a distinction of public and private property ordinances, because let's say, for example, that the public property says you can only be there till seven P.M. Well, and this is just a perfect example, if Chad's smoking till ten P.M., that's not gonna do him any good if he has to leave by seven, you know? So, again, it comes back to the business owner's private property, they should have more say what goes on in their property, as opposed to where we have control more in the city.
Right, but to Tim's point about the bank being closed, I mean, if the banks, I mean, obviously, I think there's some concern from the panel, or from the council's point of view, I hope that, you know, you don't want somebody operating at a business after hours.
Without their permission.
Without their permission.
But now, say that there was an event, I mean, clearly...
Right, right.
You know, they would end up having a different parameter, so...
Wouldn't that be part of the permitting process?
Well, that was actually one of the things I was wondering about.
From the landowner? That shouldn't be, that shouldn't be rocket science here.
Yeah, I mean, as far as Witch's Hat.
Yeah, and to that specific example, how do you permit that then? If you're gonna give all the control to the vendor and the owner, how do you, how do you get into that from the city standpoint? As opposed to the guy that wants to be on the street in a parking space?
Right.
Do you just say, we'll give you a year license for this location, you know, I don't know the answers to those. And it, I'm sure there's a way through it, I just, you know, I'm interested in the thoughts.
What some of the cities do is a, so, if it's, if it's the city property, public property, it's a fourteen-day permit, okay? They have to be licensed with the city, so they have to register, they simply turn in what they're, that they're licensed, that they're, that they are licensed, and where their establishment, where they prepare the food is. And for private, as long as they're licensed, then it doesn't, doesn't matter, as long as they're invited. And then, if they're not invited, if it's the bank property, it's trespassing anyway, so it doesn't matter, unless there is an event, and then they specifically have permission from that landowner for that time. If you're looking for, it's kinda like I said earlier, it's two different scenarios, you have, if you have a specific event in town, Pumpkin Fest, then they apply, it's a fourteen-day deal. But most of the cities that do not have designated metropolises like Ann Arbor, offer a seven or a fourteen-day for specific events, other than that, they need to be registered with the city, that's how they handle it.
When you say registered, just one time, or is it an annual?
That's up for you to decide, I mean, I would not, I would, I mean, that's where the, that's where the gray area comes in, is it, is this a local business, do you already know them, do they have a brick and mortar, is it an extension of the business? Or is it the guy driving around, you know, Larry, or Gary's food truck that hits the businesses that don't have, you know? I mean...
But it has to be equal, I mean, they're, the way that they get cart blanches to the city has to be equal, so...
No, it's never gonna be equal.
I don't think so.
It's never gonna be equal, because, yeah, you got a brick and mortar business that pays taxes here, that's the biggest difference. So, if somebody...
It's only to register though, I mean...
He's already registered, if a brick and mortar, they're already registered here, they pay tax.
And they're going to a different location, correct?
At another brick and mortar that pays taxes here. Private property to private property.
Look, maybe the lawyer can, well, actually, you got a lawyer up there too, the way the laws work, when it comes to a license for the state of Michigan, covers them for an event. If I order, if, if this goes till eleven o'clock, I call Carlos over at Aubrey's and say, I'd like to buy the city council pizza, and he pulls up his vehicle that's licensed to carry the food, are you gonna say, you can't do that because you don't have a license to bring the food in? Come on, it's already covered under their licensing. You're putting a cart, you guys keep taking two separate issues and combining them. If there's a food service establishment already licensed, he's licensed to do catering events, whether he is, he's invited by the rest, the other owner to do that event, instead of the money going through that business, it's going through his, it's already covered, he's already licensed with you guys. If you're asking outside of city, they're not licensed, or if they're not paying taxes here, then you need to have a mechanism to give the, a permit, which, what the recommendation he was saying, it should not be a year, no, it should be a limitation, unless they're establishing themselves as a business here. But you can't keep combining all those.
No, I understand what you're saying. That's, what we were trying to decide is, should it be, if you're a brick and mortar place, and you wanna extend your business to a private business, you know, like Witch's Hat, what we're seeing right now?
We're not saying we're gonna get in the way, that's my whole point.
You already shut him down. I think that's what people wanna hear, is that brick and mortar to brick and mortar that pay taxes in the city, and I know you're all tired of hearing from me, that they can do their business, their private business, and that absolutely, if these people own a business here, they should absolutely, you guys should be falling all over yourselves to give them priority over a transient food truck that's gonna, that's gonna park in the park for fourteen days, or ten days, or one day, or six hours. You guys should be falling all over yourselves to let Chad, and she's nodding, she agrees, she doesn't think I'm crazy, to let Chad put his smoker at Lindsay's that already pays taxes, 'cause he already pays taxes and rent over there. You guys should be, you guys should be begging them to keep doing what they're doing, but you shut them down, and that's why people are here wanting to hear you say yes. That's why this guy doesn't wanna hear you restrict his hours, because they could have an event, and Chad can run over there, hey, it's Monday night, we have a packed house, everyone's mad at the city council meeting tonight, and they came and had beer at the Witch's Hat, Chad bring the smoker. Like, that, that's what they wanna hear, these people that own businesses or invest in the city, she's still nodding, that Chad can come over there, private property to private property, if I have a party at my house, Chad can come over and cater it. Chad's catering at the Witch's Hat, that's what people want to hear. They don't wanna hear that he's gonna have the same rules as the out-of-town food truck from Flint.
Joyce, I think you're right, in my opinion, I think we need to have separate, separate rules for our local vendors compared to out-of-town vendors. We should give precedent and priority to our local vendors, sorry if it's not popular in the sport, but I agree.
I'm Jeff from Third Munk Brewing Company, hello, I've seen most of you there. I'm coming with another scenario, it's not been Chad at our place, but we have had the Shimmy Shack at our place, we've also had the Twisted Mitten, and so this is addressing a different thing for you guys. Obviously Shimmy Shack is here in South Lyon, that's where she lives, she does her food prep over at the VFW, she's cleared, she's licensed by the Department of Health. Twisted Mitten comes from Detroit. I plan on going through a whole roster of these kinds of food trucks and bringing them in on private property, we've got clearance from the owner to be able to do that. The question is, is when I found out that Chad was having an issue, and then I talked to the building department, there will be no more food trucks in South Lyon until this is sorted out. It sounds like there's a permit process now for this. That's correct. Okay, so then I speak to the city manager to go forward with these, which I will do. But I wanna impress upon you that we're dealing with people who are coming from outside of the city, and there could be a seven-day or fourteen-day process for that, if that makes sense. And if it's a permitting that I would need to do on their behalf, that would be helpful. Or if it was something, if I had to get credentials from them, or if we all met together to be able to take care of that. These food trucks move around, coordinating somebody who's coming in an hour across town is gonna be difficult to get all of that documentation the day of an event, so take that into consideration.
Let's see, that leads to another question, I mean, how do you know that the food truck from, say, Detroit is licensed with the state of Michigan, the health department, the Wayne County, I mean, wouldn't that individual have to...
Yes, the health concerns for our citizens.
See, that's, we can't just let anybody show up in a truck.
They have that documentation, they carry that, it's just like a restaurant poster stuff on the wall.
But I'm saying, the question was, can he do it, or do you have to have the vendor do it? And I think in order to have that documentation to get the permit, you would need the vendor to do it, wouldn't you?
They should have license, they're permitted and inspected.
No, but I'm applying for the permit.
It's his license.
Who applies for the permit?
What is the contract that they would then come in? I had electricians come in who had to pull permits, I had mechanical, they had to pull permits.
But that's, that's my point, they're the ones pulling the permits, so I'm saying, the question was, could you do it for them, or did the, would the vendor have to do it? And I think in that situation, in order...
I think one, on behalf of the vendor, for mechanical.
Right, no, but I'm saying for the food truck, in order, from Detroit, in order for them to make sure that they are, they have the health, you know, all that, I think they would have to be the ones applying for the permit to work at your location.
It could, it could end up being an online thing, I mean, I applied for some builders' licenses online.
I was trying to answer your question.
And notice that they got the permission of the property.
Right, 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 exactly.
Instead of trying to restrict what, you're all talking about what you're gonna allow them to do, they're already licensed, great idea having it online, that's great. What you need to focus on is what you're, what you're not gonna permit them to do. You don't want the truck hanging out, you know, in the public, you know, restrict what the designate, not designated areas, but what the restrictions are, make sure they're not dumping the gray water down the sewer drain, the simple stuff. They're gonna be invited by a business owner, and if they're not invited, that's why we have, the business can call the city police. I mean, they're already licensed, they already have food handler permits, so figure out the things that aren't covered under that, and stop trying to restrict to designated areas and times. It's business, it's whatever the people are there to spend the money on.
Right, but you've dealt with all these other communities, and I'm just kinda curious because we don't know the answer to these questions yet, and that's what we're trying to figure out. Why do these other cities then restrict time, restrict location, restrict...
It depends on what...
But see, that's what we're trying to address, but see, I understand.
But we don't have that issue right now, we have...
We don't have...
Oh, we have one guy that brought this up, this was mentioned in June, but because of one business, now you just, you're trying to handcuff the whole deal, these guys, these guys wanna make money, that's what they're here for.
Right, but...
Okay, make it, growing pains, it's simple, we don't know what all those restrictions are, it depends, every area's different. U of M requires, Dave from Rainbow Ice has licenses all over U of M Stadium for every football game, it's different.
That's why we were discussing with the city attorney about maybe doing a test case to see how it works, and then expanding from there.
Right, okay.
But see, that would...
It's still restriction, they're already licensed, he's got a business license, he's inviting food trucks because he doesn't sell food, he only sells beer. Alls you need to require at this point is, get the licensing, the trucks have it on their hand, and ask them to apply for whatever you wanna do, a seven-day, a fourteen-day.
But that's what we were saying we were gonna do, I mean, what else?
Immediately clamp it down, a limited basis, these guys are all business owners.
We were discussing amongst us, generally, generally, see, that's, I wanna make sure there's no confusion, we are trying to help him out, we're trying to help Chad out. What we're trying to do right now is figure out, do we want to have any restrictions? Do we want to have any limitations? Do we want to have private spots designated for certain time periods as opposed to public and vice versa? That's what we're trying to figure out overall for the ordinance, but right now, right now, we're trying to help these business owners out. We wanna make sure that if a food truck is coming from the city of Detroit, for instance, that doesn't have a brick and mortar in this location, that's not an extension of that business, because he's gonna have that, he wants to have it done. So the question we have to address is, sure, seven, fourteen-day permit, make sure that they're licensed, make sure they have everything, they get the permit done, that's what we're saying right now. As far as Chad's concerned, he has a brick and mortar establishment, right? He wants an extension to run his business at Witch's Hat. We issued a thirty-day permit. We're probably gonna amend that. No re, see, that's the whole point.
Because you're-
Because we don't have an ordinance. We can't say you can do it in the city. That's why we're issuing the, allowing him to do it right now.
You're missing the point. It's private property, he's licensed, he's got a business license, he can already cater. They're two separate, different deals.
Sir, why do- But why do other cities then issue permits? Why do they just say, "Go ahead and do it"? You don't need a permit
Has there, the-
for anything, for even the brick and mortar. I don't wanna get in an argument with you, but I don't see the logic in why, if you're saying for us-
They're already licensed in the city.
Right, but do they still need a permit in these other cities that you deal with? Even if they're already licensed in the city?
You're missing it.
My question is simple. Do these other cities require a permit?
You're missing it.
You seem to be missing it.
I'm not missing it. The food trucks that park-
I'm not talking about food trucks. I'm talking about brick and mortar establishments that allow other businesses to use their, please, let me finish. All I'm asking is why do other cities that are dealing with establishments that are brick and mortar, and have like a smoker, and they wanna go to a brew house, or a brew, brewery to sell barbecue? Why do those cities require permits in those situations?
Because it depends on what the property is.
Exactly, and we're dealing with that right now.
But you've shut him down, and you let him go for all that-
Please, ma'am, you know what?
That's resolved for everybody.
If you got anything new to say, okay, but don't just rehash.
Private property.
We understand.
Okay. That's a separate issue. Then that, that, as long as they agree to it, move on. That's, you keep going back to, we need a trial. Establish what it is you, you totally agree to right now, and send that to planning. Private property is okay, as long as they're licensed. Done.
Which goes back to my original question that I asked you earlier. Why do these other cities not do these overnight? I mean, you've dealt with Chelsea, Ann Arbor, Northville, I'm sorry, what was the other two cities you dealt with? It almost sounds like these cities did this whole ordinance overnight. I don't think they did.
They were never handcuffed. If they were, if it's a private property and they're catering an event, it doesn't matter.
But did they issue an ordinance?
It's a private property that's abutting residential. It is a different thing than if it's a private property that's, uh, abutting public property. So, I mean, there's a, there's a number of different scenarios that are not equivalent.
See, forgive my frustration. We just wanna get this right. That's all we wanna do. We wanna get this right.
Totally agree, but you can do it in steps.
That's what we're trying to do.
But you're limiting him in the process. So you shut this man down, and now you're going back and giving him restrictions. Like, at first, they said, okay, he applied for-
Restrictions, ma'am.
What, he applied for twenty-four-seven, you said that was not acceptable. So you guys mutually agreed on the four days or whatnot. Now it sounds like you guys in your discussion are saying, hey, 'cause it sounds like, like, like Glenn there is saying, well, we shouldn't restrict what they do on private property. That should be at the will of the two business owners, but yet-
No, not the two business owners. It's dictated by the operation of the owner of the property.
Sure, okay, so Ryan's business, whenever he's open, and he agrees to let Chad do Chad's business on Ryan's property, Ryan can do it. But yet, there's still an ordinance sitting there that the city signed restricting it to those certain days. So it sounds like your discussion has evolved a little bit, and you're okay with them being, them more in control if it's private property. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, it's not me. I, I spoke in my piece, I have no idea where some of that is.
Well, right, but it's, it sounds like, generally, you guys are okay with two private businesses collaborating on the hours that they agree on to do the business on their own private properties. That sounds a little different than the restrictions that are on that permit. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Here, here's the, here's the, here's the frustration on my part. We're talking apples and oranges. We're having a general discussion of what should be in an ordinance when we enact it, as opposed to what's in that temporary permit.
Right, and, but it sounds like from your discussion, things have evolved a little bit since you said, "No, we're not going to expand that beyond the hours." So based on the discussion you've had since then, can you go back and say, "Hey, if Ryan's okay with it, Chad can have that whenever he wants, and he doesn't have to come to us for that special event." It sounds like that's kinda where you're getting to.
Where we're getting to is, we're trying to have a discussion about, not Chad's.
Well, that's why I was asking my question. It just seems like it's evolved a little bit.
We're not, but see, this is, this is where we're having some issues right now, maybe some misunderstandings.
I don't feel like I misunderstand. I feel like there's still, like, hours and days restrictions on that permit versus two business owners working it out.
I think you're gonna have to just accept the fact that we're going to need time to reflect on this and come to a consensus. It's not going to be answered right this moment.
I, I understand, but you guys made the decision to shut down a business and cause literally thousands of dollars in food to be thrown away, and it wasn't until people got mad that you guys were now willing to work with him. So I think that's what everyone wants, is to hear that two private businesses can work things out on their private property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me personally, if I was Chad, and I own a business here, and there's a catering truck coming from Detroit, and I'm already paying all these taxes in the city, I would certainly want that guy to pay a lot of money for a permit to come out here with a fourteen-day compi, and come compete against me. So I think there's a lot needs to be put into the, just, you know, that's the way I feel. If some guy's coming from Detroit, and he's coming out here, and he's getting a hundred-dollar permit, and he's operating for fourteen days, he don't own nothing here, he's not paying any taxes here, and he's competing against me, I would have a problem with that.
I agree with that. Actually, yeah, that's a great point, and I think that's something the planning commission should strongly consider. It's just to, I don't wanna say hinder the out-of-town, because we wanna bring business in, but give priority to the people who are Shimmy Shack, you know, the Chad, you know, make it a little more-
Well, maybe you should go to the planning commission?
See, we don't need to reinvent this. People have already accomplished this stuff, so we need to just try to find something that seems as amenable to what our objectives are already created. I mean, we're not starting from scratch, but we do need to try to determine what direction we would like this thing to be moving in.
All right. Glenn, where were we on this?
Uh, should vendors be separated or assigned to different areas?
Separated.
Or should they be grouped together? I mean, I, I mean, this is kinda market-driven. This is event-driven, market-driven, event. Stuff might end up being a, um, food vendor rodeo, you know? So I don't know, I don't think that there's a, a monolithic answer to that.
Okay, let's move on.
Special events, so this one might end up getting interesting, uh, how they're affected by food vendors. So should the sponsor be the, the controlling interest on this, or? This one causes me a little bit of concern, only because this is sort of the, the thing that had triggered most of this activity when, um, the coffee shop and Chad had an understanding that they wanted to support each other at the, at the edge of Pumpkin Fest. And, uh, that conduct hadn't been allowed to take place. I'm wondering if, um, do, do we have the ability to to suggest that they, let's see, that, could it, could it be arranged where Pumpkin Fest could get a cut of the action? I don't know what the relationship with, what's the, the, what's the relationship with Randy Perris, or Paradise, and the revenues that are generated from that?
Nothing. They pay a fee to be on the street.
Okay, upfront, it's a fixed fee? Okay.
It's a fixed fee, and they pay a fee to be on the street.
Is it in relationship to how much activity they have on the, the footprint? Okay, so-
It's a flat fee, whether it's beautiful weather like it was this year, or raining like it was three years ago.
Okay, since there are sponsors that have supported the event, the event at large, could there be an arrangement where that, uh, the coffee house could have had this taking place at the border if they paid some kind of a fee to offset the cost of, um, or, you know, so they generate revenue for the event, and maybe it's a little bit more than what the other fee, the fee for your in-house vendor was to offset the difference of not having the benefit of sponsorship?
I'm not sure I followed that question, sorry.
Well, the sponsors, the sponsors want some kind of reward for their putting money into the pot, correct? They want recognition that they've-
Right.
They've helped enable this event to take place.
Right.
So someone coming in from outside of the Pumpkin Fest entity will end up getting the benefit of, of the good graces of, and the the direction of Pumpkin Fest without having chipped in for the benefit of the sponsor receiving benefit that that activity is going on with their assistance.
Are you referring to food vendors as a sponsor, because they're not considered a sponsor? Our sponsors are listed-
No, vibe.
Right. The sponsors have a designation on the sponsorship page. The food vendors are, are food vendors. They're simply food vendors. They're not considered, they're not considered a sponsor, just as the nonprofits that pay a fifty-dollar fee to have a ten-by-ten booth on Lake Street or Pontiac Trail. They set up a ten-by-ten booth, they pay fifty dollars, and the entire amount of money that they generate over the two days, they get back.
Okay.
They're not listed as a sponsor. Same thing with the food vendor. They pay a fee. The mon, they take cash, and the cash that comes into their food vending booth is strictly to them.
Okay.
So. They're not a sponsor.
So, so their sole financial responsibility to Pumpkin Fest is paying a fee?
Food vendor, yes, but they, I mean, they have to be licensed, not just provide us their insurance.
Well, I know, no, I mean, anybody that we would allow-
They do an application, they provide us an, an insu, you know, the insurance listing us and the city on their insurance.
Right. Anybody that would be providing food in the city would have to be licensed and hold those same things.
The issue- The issue is, any special event. I mean, for instance.
Well, Pumpkin Fest is a good example.
Right, but the Panthers have, you know, the Panther playoffs, or whatever, at the high school. Or the Junior League has a big event in McCady Field, or Cool Yule, or the Car Show. You know, you have people that are putting these together. The issue is, is there gonna be, are we gonna allow the person or entities, um, sponsoring or actually putting the event together to control, or allow them to decide who's gonna, you know, what food trucks are gonna be in? Or is it gonna be first come, first served, and that the, uh, the person or the entity putting together the event has no say in what the, what food trucks or what, uh, brick and mortar establishments can have, uh, smokers or anything like that at the event? I mean, that's the issue.
Well, I'm concerned about what had taken place there. I'm not, if, if this is the relationship with the food provisioners have with the event, sp, or, uh, supporters or organizers, and they have the ability to take a private business, a brick and mortar business, and prohibit him from conducting the same type of activity that takes place at Witch's Hat because of its proximity to an event that was being held downtown?
Well, that's, that's an issue that needs to be decided, because, I mean, if you, if you have, for instance, not necessarily-
I'd like to know what the distinction of difference is there.
I don't know.
Okay.
But see, that's the thing. If you have the, if-
It should be up to the private business. It really, it should be. The, the private business to get to decide who gets to go there, if they have the right permit from, to be a food vendor, and then the committee, whoever's putting on the event, has to back off. Sorry, I mean, it's private property. That's what it comes down to.
No, I'm saying, that's fine, but you may, if you're taking away that, I'm just saying for Cool Yule, I mean, for like the Car Show,
No, I, I wanna hear the arguments.
For Car Show, you know, that's, that's Mary Poole. She owns the Lake Street Tavern. She, she's, she's the one that's kinda put that thing together with the, uh, the other, the Car Show groups. If you're gonna say now, and I'm just throwing this out for the, you know, sake of argument, if she's sponsoring this, or she's putting it together, and she's organizing it, and she wants people to come into her restaurant because of this event, now if you're gonna allow food trucks, and I understand, or, or other brick and mortar establishments to put some events in that location, at that point, are you saying, the person organizing is saying, "Well, it's not worth my time anymore, because I'm not gonna get any benefit from this, so I'm not gonna do it anymore"?
Well, let me ask you. Um, the tavern, the hotel, those people get enriched by the simple fact that there's so much foot traffic down there for Pumpkin Fest. There's nothing different with them than there are for the other, other locations in the area, except they're brick and mortars there by happenstance in the location that the event takes place in. The, uh, the coffee shop would have enjoyed the same benefit,
Yep.
except they were prohibited from, from being able to conduct that very same thing.
And it's no offense to Pumpkin, I mean, that's just an example, you know, it's-
No, no, it's just, it's a good example to, to find out, to flesh out these concerns.
Exactly. And Pumpkin Fest should not be, and it's not Pumpkin Fest, but I'm using it as an example. They should not be able to say, a private company, a private business cannot operate here. That's just, that's ridiculous, in my opinion.
But it happens. I mean, we're, it's, it happens regularly, so.
But see, that's what I'm saying, but it's, it's beyond-
Best, why, why do we, do you think it's okay, or why do we think it's not okay?
Right, but it's, it's beyond just, you know, Pumpkin Fest, or Cool Yule, or the Car Show. What happens if you have, um, Panther Fest? You know, where we have the, the Panther playoffs, and we bring in vendors that we're going to get a percentage of their sales from? You know, but we, we decide which vendors are coming in, and I'm just using this for the sake of the example. It's nowhere near the downtown area. It's nowhere near down by any other, um, areas. Are we then saying that regardless if they're gonna give us a percentage of their business, any food truck can come into that establishment, or to work like the Panther Fest?
Well, I mean, it's a private, a private entity. You get to determine-
No, I'm just throwing this out. I don't know. That's what I'm trying to decide. I mean, I don't know.
You know what I mean? It's, it's on public property to begin with, but it's a private entity that is hosting the event, so uh, it seems as though they would be the ones that get to determine the makeup of who they sanction to, uh, perform at their event.
But see, that's, oh, yeah, okay. But see, that's the distinction we have to make if we go that route. I'm just saying, there's a lot of-
Well, that's just it. That's what I was getting at. There's a lot of moving parts here, and I don't know, it, it's not monolithic, so.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that one.
The private stuff is way easier to solve than the public stuff.
Yeah, but as a general rule, for me at least, I think the public, the private property should have a little more leniency as to deciding who they get to have.
Okay, the idea of, uh, a fixed location, um, is there, is, what's the up and downside of, do you require them to move daily? Is it, what's the, what's the concern? You have a, an empty food truck, it's the, a Sunday afternoon, and they're not working their food truck that day. Do we require that they take their stuff out so we don't have to be concerned about whether it's vandalized, or whether it blows up, or-
I think they usually wanna take them. I think they want to take them.
I know, but I mean, should we require that to take place?
Hmm. I think we should. I think, I think they should, yeah, 'cause they're, if it's a food truck, it's mobile.
They can't be there twenty-four-seven, I mean-
No, because, no. They come and go, that's what they do.
What about, what about brick and mortar establishments that have, you know, again, you have the food truck distinction, and then you have the brick and mortar, I've learned, um, um-
Well, Chad doesn't leave a smoker outside of it, right?
No, I'm just saying, I'm not talking about just Chad, I'm talking about in general. I mean-
You're talking about the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance. I'm not talking about specific, I'm talking about in general. Um, do we allow a smoker, for instance, not necessarily Chad's, but a smoker to stay on an establishment for, say, the summer? I mean, that's, that's an issue that if there, if the owner of the smoker feels confident that it won't be vandalized, it's in a good location, should we allow that?
But that's a pub, I think that's easier answered if it's a private, if it's public.
That's, that's private, right. If it's public, it has to go.
Do we require them to take it out of the public right of way when they're not operating, or when they anticipate?
What happens if the owner of the private establishment says, "I'm fine with it." You know, he's paying me, I don't know, X number of dollars a month.
We don't bear the same responsibility to that private property on private property.
Right, it would be private versus public then, and, and if it's public, it needs to go, unless it's here for a festival and it's here for a three-day weekend.
We don't accept the additional burden of maintaining, of, of monitoring that, that private property. The food truck, not the dirt.
And that goes with, how long should it be allowed to stay in one place? That's the same area. Should the vendor have to comply with parking restrictions? I had a question for, uh, Fire Chief. Is there a number of people allowed? Is he under numbers at the Witch's Hat Brewery? As far as parking lot per, or spaces per number of people, or how many people are allowed in the building at one time?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. His current occupancy is ninety-nine. The city ordinance formula is zero-point-five parking spaces per, per seat in the establishment, so he's required to have basically forty-nine spaces.
So he would lose a percentage of the people allowed in his business, then?
No, he's got, what, four or five more spaces than what he's obligated to?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Under the current permit, he's, he's fine and in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay.
I thought we were just, I thought we were just doing a general overview. I thought we were just, I thought we were just doing a general overall ordinance, not a specific one.
Can or will it impede traffic? Well, you know, that's gotta be looked at. How does the-
No, we've got laws on that.
How does a food vendor and the type of vehicle affect other vehicle and pedestrian traffic nearby? Well, in this particular scenario, we've got another brick and mortar business right next door with their parking lot. Hmm? Absolutely, but I'm just saying, and we know the over, where the overflow's been going. Okay, thank you. I'm just reading what's down here, okay? We're going through the checklist. Okay, thank you.
Competition is good.
But yeah, I mean, the private situation would likely be benign where the public one would, you know, I mean, if they're in the public right of way-
And that's the pedestrian.
It's a lot more problematic.
And the requirements for a place for restroom facilities, sanitation requirements, hand washing station, garbage respect, uh, receptables, responsibility for garbage generated by vendor and its customers. All issues that have to be addressed.
Personally, I think garbage should be managed, but the rest of it, anecdotally, from the stuff that was in our packet, um, you know, there's an awful lot more garbage created if you have seating and things of that nature, so, um, it seems like we would, I, I don't know, I guess someone could make a case that, uh, this scenario would make good sense to have seating, but, uh, it seems like at least maybe for starters, we, we try to keep it as simple as possible.
Again, how is it addressed with tents and trailers and push carts? What type of vehicles? With other type of vehicles?
Push carts.
Now, that needs to be addressed.
The push carts make sense. I mean, a hot dog vendor or something, you know-
Awesome food comes out of push carts.
Seems like that'd be pretty straightforward, but the tent thing, I'm thinking the tent thing seems more of a mercantile thing rather than food, but who knows? I don't know.
The next question basically runs into the same thing. And the seating prohibited or required, if seating's allowed, what are the regulations regarding quantity and location? I think I brought that up a few minutes ago.
The utility service thing is a, kind of a real issue. Um, to me, it seems like water should be self-contained rather than trying to hook up-
Garden hose.
And the electricity usually is a generator. They usually have their own generators, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you're public, if you're public on public property, you gotta be self-sufficient. That's what a food truck is. It's a self-sufficient piece of equipment. But if it's on private and the person wants to give them electricity and water, they can do that. I mean, there's no problem with that.
The water one-
They pay their water bill.
No, no, it's not the use, it's the transfer of, of water in a sanitary way from the building to-
But that's, but that's the health department issue.
Yeah, the, the health department regulations-
That's not your issue.
Take care of that.
Yeah, that makes sense, sure.
Get their license.
Yeah.
What lighting requirements and limitations should the city have in place? Uh, again, it's- I don't know how much womanation-
You wanna have a safe environment if it were in the dark, but, um, you don't wanna end up having where it looks like a second city glowing on the horizon there, too.
And then the next one is what noise, music requirements and limitations should the city have in place? We have that in place.
Usually food trucks don't play music.
Yeah.
They're cooking food.
Here's the signage issue again, and the vehicle, well, we're not gonna have to worry about that. They're gonna, it's gonna be what they have.
But we already have regulations on sandwich boards and things like that.
Should the city impose maintenance and appearance requirements? Well, again, you're, you're dictating how they, like you say, what color their truck gonna be? I mean, would, you know, I don't think we can-
I don't know, I mean, if someone drives in with a rust bucket, it seems like you might wanna add them-
Maybe the best food going, I don't know. What is the reasonable and appropriate fee for the application or permit?
This one's kind of important, I mean, you know.
Yeah, like I was going to-
Is the objective to try to make them, make the brick and mortars, make it reflect more of the, the fair share of brick and mortal, mortars?
Brick and mortar. I, I don't know what you're asking me. Were you looking for English correction, or?
Is the fine, or the fee or permit cost going to be driven by trying to get parity with brick and mortars tax?
No, that's, that's a lot. That's, that's gonna come a lot from what the people, you know, where we asked what the brick and mortar places' opinions are. I mean, that's gonna be driven, I don't think it should be driven just by planning commissioner, it'd be driven just by city council. That should be driven by actual feedback from the brick and mortar places.
Right, and that's what they did in East Lansing.
Yeah, like, what do you, what do you think of people? Cause I mean, you know, competition is out there, competition is good, but you have to be fair to all these places. That's just, that's an issue that I really think the businesses need to step up and, and decide. You know, they, they-
They should have input.
Yeah, they should have input in it, and then, you know, everything gets taken into consideration, but I don't think that's something that we should put on there without, without their feedback.
I'm not sold on that, only in that, i- it's one thing to say, do you approve of the use of, of, uh, food trucks? Or do you see that as too much competition and you don't wanna compete with them? I think that they would be easy to answer that-
No, see, no.
But the idea of, do you want, do you want someone from outside coming into the community, do you want them to try to bear the same percentage of, of, um, paying the tax base to be available in our community? As what, if we are, if you were to scale down our unit to be the size of a food truck, you know?
I don't think you can ask the businesses, I don't think you can ask the businesses, do you want food trucks or not? I don't think that's the question for the businesses. The question-
Oh, I think that's absolutely the question.
No, I don't think it is, because, it's, all the businesses get together and they say, "No, no food trucks." And then we go, "Okay."
Well, yeah, I mean-
You know, businesses change. No, I, I think we, we say to the business, "Food trucks are coming in, how would you like them?" I don't think that you can just tell, let the businesses decide what they want here. Any business is gonna say, "I don't want competition."
Well, the East Lansing example is a perfect example.
Yeah, and then they asked for feedback, but they didn't ask-
They prohibited them from being in substantial tracts of land that were in direct competition with them.
But see, we have a-
That's, that's a parameter, that, that's not saying they can never come. You say, "Food trucks are coming, what would you like to see with the food trucks?", not say, "Food trucks are not coming."
We have to protect our established brick and mortar-
Yes, absolutely, but I, but you can't say they're, that we can't ban food trucks.
Right.
You just have to say, "What do you want? How do you wanna see it? What do you think the fees are gonna be?"
Right, the fees have to be, to, you know, that's why you have to get feedback from the brick and mortar-
Absolutely, you have to protect the brick and mortar.
Because you have to have a balancing between the two.
Absolutely, you do.
You can't have, you know, food trucks coming in, not paying any taxes, and taking advantage of our brick and mortar establishments when our brick and mortar establishments are paying, yeah.
I get that, I'm thinking, don't you think that if you were a brick and mortar, you'd say, "That fee has to be way high"?
Well, of course, they're gonna say that, but I mean, but, but the point is, we have to take that into consideration.
That's why I'm thinking that it's not necessarily in their-
But they should have an opinion.
In their, well-
You know, they should definitely have an opinion on it.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree.
And that's where they can come to planning commission as well.
But we do have to, uh, we do have to make the two entities compatible.
Right.
For sure.
And again, uh, a little redundancy, permit process, inspection approval process, look like, who should not receive a permit? What are vendor qualifications, insurance requirements, bonds and other deposits? Um, generally, we have those kinda things in place. I guess the appeal process is, if a permit is denied, what is the appeal process?
But then we have to make sure that we have specif- I mean, we have to have specific reasons for the denial. It can't just be-
The rust buckets aren't allowed.
Right. Cause you have to defend it.
I guess there's two more over here. Health and fire code compliance, that makes sense, that's what we have going.
Yep, goes understanding.
What are the city enforcement remedies? Civil infraxion, pound the vehicle, revoke the permit, appeal of the requ- requisition, complaint process?
Let the legal people take care of that.
Yep. Okay, we have discussed it. Now, I'd like to finish that appointment. Well, Jason, this is for the Parks and Recs.
It's your appointment, so it just needs a second, right?
Needs a second on it. All right, Harvey seconds that. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay, is there any kind of manager's report? You wanna embellish?
Actually, there is, uh, given the duration of the meeting, I still feel compelled to, uh, have a few things to present here.
You're fine.
Temporary manager's report, uh, last week, I and Mayor Wallace met with the Detroit Council of Mexico at City Hall-
Counsel it. The consulate, right.
Well, actu-
It's a council.
Actually, the council is the person, the consulate is the building. Anyway, we discussed, uh, counselor notification regarding foreign nationals and economic development. During the week, I also met with City Attorney Wilhelm, Councilman Kivell, and Clerk Deaton regarding transient merchant and food vendor licensing. I also arranged a meeting with City Attorney Wilhelm, City Planner Avantini, Witch's Hat Brewing owner and Alexander Center owner for a meeting Friday, October sixteenth. The agenda will include potential shared parking between Alexander Center and Witch's Hat Brewing Company. A shared parking agreement could facilitate business operations for both entities. A side note is this would possibly allow for the opening of two vacant storefronts at Alexander's Center, which would be conducive to business. I also worked with Visicom Services, the city's IT provider, to get Councilperson Dixon's email account back up and working. Made contact today with Visicom to get Councilperson Kopkowski's email, uh, working properly.
I think I'm up and running.
And, uh, finally, from my attempt, my weekly report to council, I coordinated activities among, amongst the city attorney, the city planner, the clerk, and the police department, and the fire department regarding transient, transient merchant application for Mr. Lindsay. That's a lot of what the discussion was. He submitted the revised application today, and we were able to issue that thirty-day permit today. With that said, there was some discussion about not having any ordinance in place, and while it's true we don't have any, any ordinance in place for food trucks, the dealings with Mr. Lindsay were based upon our transient merchant ordinance, which does exist. Other ordinances that could come into play with street food vendors are both the existing peddler ordinance and the existing solicitor ordinance. It's important-
Was that a second one?
Solicitor.
Oh, yes, okay.
And it's important to point out with respect particularly, particularly to solicitor permits, but anyone that deals with the public within the city limits, uh, the police department feels strongly that we do have a need to background the individuals who are interacting with our citizens to make sure they're not convicted felons, to make sure they're not convicted drug dealers, to make sure they're not on the child molester list or the sex offender list. So there are reasons that we would want to background the individual, street vendors, for lack of a better term. Final topic, because I don't know when the city manager will be back, but it will be necessary for a decision to be made this week. The city attorneys indicated that either the real manager or the temporary manager could make this decision, but I want counsel to hear about a potential contract renewal for our employee health insurance. And I was not present at this meeting due to two other schedule conflicts, so our city bookkeeper conducted the meeting with ASR. But we're facing a potential, uh, after our first year for the renewal of a thirty-four percent increase in healthcare.
Wow, they hooked up.
That was negotiated down to twenty-seven point nine percent. The huge increase, according to ASR, was primarily due to two major claims in the first year with ASR. I won't go into the particulars of which two claims those were. We currently pay thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars per month in healthcare premiums, not counting prescriptions. And under the twenty-seven point nine percent rate increase, we would be paying forty-nine thousand seven twenty-eight, so basically eleven thousand dollar increase per month based on the one and only year of experience that ASR has with our claim history. The only due diligence and the only comparable I can offer is the monthly premiums for Blue Cross Blue Shield, but theirs would be, including prescriptions, would be sixty-one four ninety-four. So even with the twenty-seven percent increase with ASR, we would still be well ahead of the game to renew that contract. ASR needs an answer this week if we're going to renew. Otherwise, we're not going to hold that twenty-seven point nine percent increase as proposed. Uh, it is truly my hope that the real city manager will be back. She has a little more background and, and history in dealing with this, but if not, if she's not back, somebody does need to deal with it.
When do we have to make the, or when does, I mean, what's the exact date that we have to make the decision?
According to Lori, it was simply this week.
When do we start these negotiations? Do you know?
I think they've been going on for quite some time, but I have not been privy to any of it.
I don't expect, I'm sorry.
I understand that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess, I, I'm just kinda baffled that we go from what, what do you say, thirty-five down to twenty-nine? So they're willing to come in-
We currently pay thirty-eight, eight and change, and it would go up to forty-nine, seven and change.
No, I'm saying that the negotiation, they went from a increase of thirty-five to-
It was going to be thirty-four percent, and it went down to twenty-seven point nine percent.
That's, I negotiate, that's not, uh-
And as I say, I wasn't part of that meeting. I had basically an hour and a half notice-
Twelve thousand a month less than Blue Cross.
I had basically an hour and a half notice on this meeting, and I had two other schedule conflicts that day, so I wasn't able to attend this particular meeting.
Well, we're gonna need insurance, and it's hard, a hard argument to make that we would wanna jump up to Blue Cross knowing that they're substantially higher. I would like to know, though, if you could see if Lori might have some insight in it, if they gave any indication if, if our current year is, has a different performance and exposure to them, if we could see that substantially drop?
That was the implication when I asked Lori what the reason for the huge increase was, and she told me it was the two major claims.
I know, but I mean, there won't be two major claims in the next performance of the year, so will that have an impact on pushing the costs down again?
I would have to specifically ask her that, but that was the implication in my discussion with her. Thank you for the time. That's it for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there was a, a comment in there about Glenn Meadows, and maybe it was in bills, I don't remember, but them making a request for dedication of their utilities. Um, are we in the process of that? Is that at the edge? Has everything been fulfilled?
We've done a walkthrough on the physical repairs or changes needed that Punch List has been given to them, along with a, an as-bill print of their property, and that's where we stand right now.
So, there doesn't sound as though there's a great deal of conflict there?
Pardon me?
There doesn't sound like a lot of conflict, uh, getting it resolved?
Well, we don't make the repairs, they do.
Are there substantive repairs? I mean, is it just little stuff, or is it-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, like every place. Manholes need repaired, hydrants that are, um, spun in the direction, or the shut-off is low-grade, we wanna dug up and exposed, so we take over, we know exactly where everything is. That process is underway.
Okay. Any anticipation of how long it might end up being?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, that's nice, though, that, uh, it sounds as though we probably have a pretty cooperative- Well, that's nice, though, that it sounds as though we probably have a pretty cooperative relationship, so that's helpful. The, the circumstances that have kind of unfolded from the city manager being out have made some glaring, exposed us to some glaring failures that had taken place with simple professional business things. The idea that people could call the city anticipating, talking to the city manager, and there wasn't even a voice message in her phone change to, to give them notice to contact somebody else or that, that she was going to be out. I think that that, that deserves some discussion with, with her at least, whether it's in closed session or open session, I don't know. But I think that by following a process of any kind of personnel circumstance like that, I think it's justifiable to at least make some suggestive correction, corrective actions that need to be conducted so that this doesn't happen again. I'd like to see that on our, that discussion on our next meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Aaron?
I agree. I'd like to see that discussion as well. And thank you, Chief Collins, for stepping in. And you seem like you got a lot done in a week.
I was a busy person.
I see that. So, thank you, and that's all I have today.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, and I'm not going to beat this to death, but same sentiments, but, you know, this issue with Lindsay's was before us, before the city manager went on medical. So it's, it says a lot that you're able to come in here and, and fix it basically in a week. So thank you for that. And going forward, I would like to see, my hope is that, let's say Chad wants to go out on a Wednesday and he has permission from Witch's Hat, that it's just as simple as a phone call and saying, "Hey, I want to smoke tonight. Meats."
Oh, yeah.
Meats. Want to smoke meats? And he would be able to give that, I could see how that'd be funny, but I, I would, he would be able to get that courtesy, that professional courtesy extended to him where it'd be that simple. So that's my, my hope. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Bev?
I just want to thank the chief for his help with my computer.
You're welcome.
I received an email from the group that wants to start raising funds for the development of Volunteer Park. It's my understanding, how we did this the last time is we directed them to the Parks and Rec Commission when we did it with Junior League for McAdie Park. So I'm thinking, I'm just asking, but I think that's the route they need to go. They would have to go through the Parks and Rec and start figuring out ways of raising money because they're really interested in starting the project at Volunteer Park.
Our master plan needs to be approved first, though.
I understand, but they want to at least start raising funds, and they want to make sure that still.
Sell on brownies?
Yeah, they have big plans. Thank you.
Brownies could be big.
Real quick.
No, no.
I'll thank the chief for stepping in, stepping up, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank Carl Richards for his insight on some of the things going on around town, and he's the one that's out there, that's for sure, and given as due for that, I thank you for, and you've maintained, in recent times, you've learned, just speak it out, get it done, get on the next one, and then head out. You've really picked it up. I appreciate that, and they're not as long-winded. Thank you, Carl. And also, good news, as far as the building that we're looking to take down at 390 South Lafayette, we were waiting for Detroit Edison and Consumers Power to disconnect. DTE has done their part, so now we're waiting on consumers. There was a 45-day window at the time to get it done. It's been since September 21st, so you can do your own math, figure out where we're at on that. Hopefully, in the next couple, three weeks that we can, again, we're at the mercy of Consumers Power on that. With that, I'd like to call for an adjournment.
I support.
Any, all in favor, say aye. Okay. That ends this meeting of October 12, 2015. It lasted two hours and 55 minutes.